Okay, good morning. I would like to also order the city council work session retreat. And first on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda.
Tomo second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, great. Okay, so first we have public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Yeah.
I'm Jan Seibert-Wormand, P O Box seven seven eight Cannon Beach. Dear Mayor and City Councilors, please reconsider the cost of appeals. They are too high for many Cannon Beach residents. The only ones who can afford to pay for an appeal are wealthy people or businesses such as contractors, etc. For example, the Monica Court subdivision with five lots to be developed at this time would cost six hundred dollars per lot for a total of three thousand dollars to appeal. Could we as a community look into the appeals costs? We don't want frivolous appeals, but we do need to be able to have our residents be able to appeal when really necessary.
Thank you, Jen. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comment? If you'd raise your hand if you do. Okay, I'll click there is is anyone, so we will go ahead and start with our retreat discussions. Before we start the discussions, I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is on Zoom and YouTube being recorded live, but at any time, anyone can go back and watch the show. The show. The show. Okay, so first on our agenda, we have the City Hall and Police Station funding for construction projects.
Bruce.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Is that the lead on the show?
Yeah, the show, this part of the show. A presentation probably for the first hour and a half of the retreat today will be dealing with the of the three major projects, the major facility projects that we have, those being City Hall, Police Station, and Cannon Beach Elementary. So we'll be talking about the costs and you'll be hearing primarily from our construction manager and general contractors. And then after that, we'll be talking about the schedules of the project. It won't be, although we have representatives of CETA on the phone, today is not intended to be looking at the renderings or anything like that. It's just the schedule and budget. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jordan Sal. And he is with Emmerich Construction. He's ready to go.
I'm ready to go. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm doing well.
Good, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I was expecting when I heard it was a retreat that you guys would be on some tropical beach somewhere. Um, so yeah, like Bruce said, I do want to speak to the City Hall and Police Projects. I'm going, as far as schedule goes, I'm going to speak to them together because even though there is about a week lag between the two, they're they're close enough to where I'll speak to both of them together. As far as our first step schematic design, we are through schematic design that ended in November, so that moves us into what we call design development. Design development for both projects is scheduled to last early November into into February. To get through design development towards the end of design development is when Emmerich will be putting together our next project estimate. The only project estimate that we currently have is the one that we presented at schematic design, which is, I believe we presented to you on November third. So we have not updated an estimate since then. That will happen. That will happen in the middle of February. Once we're out of design development, we'll move into what we call CDs or construction documents. That's another four month period of refining the drawings. That will last from February into June. Again, we will do another typically fifty percent CD estimate during that timeframe. And then once we're through CDs, we have a construction permissible set of drawings. We're anticipating going in for permit for both projects currently early June, middle of June, depending on how some meetings go, and that period we're expecting to last about two months for the permit review. At the same time, the drawings go in for permit review is the same time that Emmerich will then publicly bid both projects. So we're using that time of permit review to to bid the projects as well. During permit review, some comments will come back. CETA will capture those and issue those via addendum, so all of our subcontractors are aware of any changes to the drawings. After we bid the bid both projects, we'll sit down with the team and we'll work through what we call buyout, and buyout is essentially selecting the subcontractors, making sure they have all the full scope of the project to establish our GMP. Based on that timeline, we're anticipating a start of construction in August, early September. Are there any questions on the schedule?
George, I just want to give some information regarding some acronyms that you use. If way back when we were doing the project, it was preliminary design. And then we got into schematic design, which is S D. Design Development, which is where we are right now. We've already said, okay, the elevations are fine, the floor plan is fine. Now let's put start putting in details. That's Design Development. So that's where we are now. And then C D is contract drawings. So we're not there yet for it, but that's actually what the the permit drawings that we would use and put out to bid. Okay.
And there was one other acronym I used at the end there, which was GMP. That is the Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price for the construction portion of the project.
Could you say that one more time?
G M P Guaranteed Maximum Price.
Okay, thank you.
And that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That happens at the start of construction?
That happens in between bidding and the start of construction. We will not start construction until we have an established GMP.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So both of these construction projects are scheduled for the same time, roughly the same timeframe to go into construction.
Correct. We are. We are looking at expediting the police project by a couple of weeks. It's a smaller project. And we're hoping that we can start that project a few weeks ahead of the City Hall project because we have some ground improvements that we need to do up there, and we also have the demolition of the City Hall existing City Hall building now. And so we're trying to create a little bit of a stagger so we can flow our subs through both projects efficiently. But but yes, around the relative same timeframe, correct?
What that means is the concrete guys, when they are finished, it's the Police Station can come here.
Yep.
Keeping them under contract.
So there's some, there's some efficiencies in doing that. Could you speak to the costs, maybe the increased costs if we attempted to stagger the projects?
And in what type of stagger are we talking about? Because we are looking to stagger them a little bit, just just the demolition and the relocation of City Hall and the demolition of City Hall actually creates a stagger because we don't have that work up at the PD site. So I mean, we would be looking for a three to four week stagger. So what I what I'm saying there is like, we'd like to be starting excavation and concrete at PD first while we're doing the demolition abatement of City Hall and the relocation of City Hall. So then when the concrete work, the majority of the structural concrete work is done at PD, then we can move that crew down to City Hall. So there's actually cost efficiencies in staggering it versus trying to do both at the same time, because then you're having to double the the amount of manpower it takes to do that work.
Yeah, I'm thinking of a much greater timeframe between the two. And just based on public comment, I think that people think that that might be a good idea to stagger them. So just kind of want to wrap our heads around what that would actually cost to do that.
Understood. Well, the the stagger that we're talking about right now is is a month. That that works okay, and that allows us to stagger the crews. If we're talking about a longer stagger, really, your cost implications are going to be inflation, the the time. Because we are already hoping to stagger the crews by a month or two anyway, but if you're looking at six months, a year, eighteen months, then it's the function of time.
It would also mean availability of crew as well, right? If you had to stagger, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, one of the benefits of bidding both of these projects together at the same time is that we'll end up with the same subcontractors for both projects. And we'll get get them locked in and ready to go. If we do stagger it by a year, I'm just going to use a year. Then you're you're talking about two different bidding cycles and and you'll end up with two different, probably separate subcontractors for each project.
You know, so you're gonna, it's a more attractive project if they have two projects to work on.
Correct.
With more competition.
Do you have any idea when, at least for now, you plan to demolish City Hall?
Um, again, with with construction starting in August of twenty twenty four, that would be our first activity. If we stay on that on that schedule.
Sometime in August or early September?
Mm hmm. It would be relocation first and then abatement and demolition of City Hall.
And you haven't determined a place yet for the new for for people to go to yet, have you?
No, those are conversations we're having currently in design development.
Any other questions on the schedule? Okay.
Okay, do you want to talk about budget?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. So again, nothing has changed on the budget since we presented in November. The next milestone will, the next milestone budget will be delivered around the middle of February. I think we have February fifteenth currently on our schedule. So that is the next big milestone budget check in. And what that will do, will capture all of the the development of the drawings, any changes that have been made, which there haven't been very many, and and give us a new snapshot in time of where we're at in the design development phase as far as budget goes. To recap where we were at in November, for construction costs for City Hall, we were at twelve point two million. And for the Police Department, we were at seven point, seven point two million. Total for City Hall, including other soft costs, F F and E design, designing consultant fees, we were at fifteen, call it fifteen point four. And for City Hall and for PD, we were at nine point seven for a total of just over twenty five million. All in.
And have you seen any signs of that changing significantly?
Um, the only signs we've seen as far as pricing changing has been towards the positive. Things are starting to level out as far as construction costs go. There is a union carpenters labor increase anticipated in June, but we have factored that into our most recent estimate.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also say, right, Jordan, subcontractor availability is becoming better. What the market's doing, which is going to be great for us in the market when we're bidding this because of competitive bidding with a wider range of stuff.
Yeah, which 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 we need in the coastal market. You know, there are absolutely capable contractors on the coast that we will want to utilize, but we will be having to bring in subcontractors from the valley. And so that that increased competition will widen that pool.
All right, so who is Will F?
He's going to be the project manager.
He's a project manager. Okay.
Yeah, Will is Emmerich's project manager.
Okay, just want to make sure I knew.
Yeah.
Who was talking?
She was talking.
Yeah, sorry about that. I thought my video was on. I apologize. I'm actually on vacation right now, but this is important, so.
So you're on the tropical beach?
No, it's vacation. That's not till later in the next year.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the budget for these two projects? Like I said, the the next big milestone will be middle of February. As far as representing the updated budget.
Correct, for approval to go into CDs.
And then after that, it's the, you set the guaranteed maximum price.
There's, there's one more step. That'll, that'll be the development of the CDs or the construction documents.
Okay.
And then after that, in bidding, we will set the guaranteed maximum price. But the
When will that be?
Uh, currently, we have that happening, excuse me, in July. Um, yes, both for City Hall and PD in in July, about a week apart.
Yeah, part of July.
Do you see the price changing? I mean, what kinds of things would would cause the price to change greatly from what you've got now?
Um, really, in this, excuse me, in design development, there's, there's really three things that can cause the price to swing drastically. One of them would be just increasing square footage, changing scope. Another one can be material selection, so getting, you know, really exotic with what we're what we're cladding the building with or or finishing the building out with. And then the other one, which I think we're kind of through right now, is is really the ground. If there's significant ground improvements or finding things in the geotech that are that are telling us that we need to do significant soil improvements, which we do have on both of these projects, but we've captured, captured those already. So it would be any unperceived below the ground. I guess, I guess the fourth one could also be any outside entities that have influence on what we're doing. So ODOT, those types of things, which I think we're through as well.
Or decisions of the owner. There are things that we could decide to do, delay, or I guess, changing the scope would be on the owner's side, but those kind of things can, we can influence the cost.
Uh, Jordan, could you clarify one thing? If they stagger the projects, the, I would assume that there's a remobilization of your group at a stagger that you might find efficiency at, but I don't know that.
It it depends on the length of the stagger. You know, if we are starting, let's just use, let's just say we're going to do PD first, and that's a year long project, and then we're going to start City Hall right at the end of that, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a a remobilization where anytime, you know, within the the PD construction phase, there wouldn't be a remobilization because we'd already, we'd already be there.
All right, it's lying share of what we have to talk about. So any questions, concerns?
I guess I'm concerned about the ground improvements. I I get real nervous about that whole, the whole soil conditions for both both sides.
Well, we think we've identified what we have.
Yeah, I hope so.
And so that's being designed into the project and is already incorporated cost wise.
And I have concerns about ODOT.
Yeah, that's another thing.
ODOT.
I've already talked to ODOT.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know. I don't think ODOT will, I I don't, I don't know what would happen to change ODOT's mind. But right now they're seeing it as a relatively minor entrance negative.
Something that Jennifer just brought up about the remobilization. And can you help me understand that? Is there a suggestion there that we hold off on the City Hall project, or is that just a byproduct of the?
I think it was byproduct of these conversations. But go ahead, go ahead, Jennifer.
I I was concerned that we wanted to capture anything if if they were going to pull off a site and needed to come back, that we captured that in our, in our thought process of additional costs. Because if we're trying to stagger the subs through and we're trying to, you know, kind of find the sufficiency, if we said, hey, do a project, go away, come back in the, when we're all done and do another project, there's sometimes additional costs. I just wanted to make sure we are aware of that.
And you do bring, you do bring up a good point, Jennifer. From the general contractor standpoint, you know, if we were able to go linear versus concurrent, so start one project, finish it, then start the other project and finish it, there wouldn't be a remobilization for the general contractor, but but there would be some costs associated with remobilizing the subcontractors. Your drywall is still not going to be there. You're starting the process all over again versus the way that we were looking to stagger it originally, which would be flow them through both projects together.
And that's what I meant by an owner decision could change it. Everybody's move on to Cannon Beach Elementary. There's any more questions on Police Station and City Hall?
Everybody ready to move on?
It takes pretty soon. And we are, we are, I mean, I just want to make sure. So we are planning to do them concurrently or almost concurrently.
A staker of a month.
Yes.
Yeah, so that the drywaller will be here, finish one project, move on to the other.
That's the intent.
Okay.
Okay. And then we are working on the relocation of staff. I think I sent you something on that. We look, we've identified a number of options. We just have to talk about what can we do as far as having a minimal impact on residents with any changes that we have to make. We'll work those out as best we can. We'll get with you when we know what planning on doing. And then also that will give us, that the work will be done primarily by Emmerich. And so they will be the ones that will give us the cost and the timeframe. But we wanted to do that so that we're done and out by the July timeframe.
When we relocate the employees, I and I don't know what the options are, but i- if there are any buildings that you're going to have to relocate them to, are they going to have to be repaired and and refurbished before they move in or?
It'll depend where we go. But for example, we've got the Public Works Yard, and there's a conference U C up there for their operations. And so that's someplace we might be able to put a couple of people. That would take a little bit to change the function of the space. I don't, we're kind of scratching our heads on on buildings that are available in town. And we're probably leaning more towards using portables. And then if we use portables, we wanted to try to to work it out that we get a portable that could be moved to be the food bank after we're done with the project. But another function that we're looking to change, I think I mentioned this, is the the south fire station, that they don't really man that all the time and potentially police could go there. A lot of the radio equipment and stuff like that is already there, but we would, when I'm talking about impacting residents and, you know, we want to make sure we have somebody from PD wherever we have the general employees. So that somebody doesn't have to go there to do, you know, to talk about a ticket or whatever.
And all of those costs of the repairs, renovations, mobiles, all that's included in the overall twenty five million dollar cost?
Yes, well, there's an allowance for it.
Okay.
So if we come up and it's, you know, we decided, you know, we're going to build a new building someplace, you know, that's not, that wouldn't be covered, but if the cost of portable is probably this.
And we could use maybe the chamber for the Chamber of Commerce Bill or the Visitor Center for our meetings?
That's what I'm planning on doing is asking Jim if he would let us do that. We would, we would monopolize a lot of time. But I think that there's some arrangements that we could make that would be worthwhile. I just haven't actually talked to Jim about it. That does look like probably one of the better places where we could have our meetings.
Yeah.
And farmer's markets, it's going to be impacted.
If we are able to find a site other than here to put the portables, potentially they could continue with their materials and equipment and things like that. We've got to figure out where we can put it so that it's the same smooth process, a setup and takedown.
Connectivity would be a problem too, because we probably won't have any
Electricity, yeah.
No power, no internet.
Right.
The wireless.
But in some of the investigations we've done, a lot of places that have farmer's market don't have those. We're kind of unique that we do provide those.
We have the food, food trucks and that, they they need hookups as well.
Yeah. Now, let me, let me just say, this could be a mess. It's going, we will do the best that we can, but it's going to be inconvenient. We're, no matter, if we don't put, no matter where we put portable, so that's what we end up with, they're going to inconvenience somebody. Somebody's going to be mad. Somebody's going to wish they went someplace else. And it's just, you know, my experience is you just have to plow, you do the best you can, do the best planning, and then you plow through the time and just get it done. But we're not going to have a perfect answer to what we what we have to do.
Right. And I've seen a lot of farmer's markets. I go to the lots of different farmer's markets and I've seen them set up in fields and they're wonderful.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, I'm curious what the next part of the presentation and the school being scheduled to be under construction at that point before these things happen. Is there any option for that property? Or is there just going to be too much going on there under the current schedule to consider anything like farmer's market or portables or?
They may be able to, let's have David Brookings come up. He's the, he's going to be our contractor for Cannon Beach Elementary project and let him talk about schedule, and then we can ask him those questions.
Okay.
David is on. I'm not sure he's promoted.
Yeah, I just, there it is. Yeah, I just recorded.
Thank you.
Everyone, nice to see you today.
Good morning.
Morning. I cut out for a bit, but I think we were going to talk about schedule for CBE.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I can, I can talk about what Gary just mentioned. Yeah, our our current construction start date is mid-August at this point, so I'm not sure if that would allow any use of that site. In the meantime, we're trying to figure out where what City Hall during the City Hall and Police Station projects. That helps the information there. But I'll dive into our current schedule where we are on CBE. We have received the design development drawings from Dustin's team, and we are about fifty percent of the way through our review with anticipating having a complete budget for design development in mid-January. Pending any changes at the DRB or the next City Council meeting on the ninth, hoping to present that to you all on the thirtieth. And that would be our next milestone approval. From there, that would release Dustin and team to jump into construction drawings, which we would be step by step with them, looking at updates, talking to the subcontractor market, and getting ready for the permitting process or the drawing, permit drawings to be submitted, as well as our subcontractor bidding date. We're looking for that to happen in June, both submitting for permit and subcontractor bidding. Those will take about one to two months respectively. And then if everything goes well, on both of those, construction would start late August, early September. Late August, um, early September.
Wow. That'd be interesting.
On schedule for C B.
So they're going to start construction right at peak of our tourist season.
Where's the end of it?
August, September is pretty, especially August is.
Yeah.
Yeah, weather dependent. Yeah. I'm not sure that's going to be a problem. It's just noted that that's when it's going to start.
See, I don't know what the length of these projects, if we could. Potentially affect the beginning of the next year. And that's what I'm saying, we just got to get through it. The project is going to take the time it's going to take. We'll do what we can to minimize the impacts. I think that the uh, Canby Elementary will have probably less of an impact than what City Hall will have.
Yeah.
Some of the things that were, that can make a difference. For example, um. Can be council decisions and policy decisions. If we say that we are not going to have um, farmer's market. Then that means that that space will be available for either for the contractor to do a laydown. Or for parking and keep the things as as normal as possible. Um, if we have it, it'll, we'll change things for one day out of the week. It's, that's just a decision you can make and say that's worth it or it's not worth it. But there will be things that we'll be coming to you with to ask you, how do you want to handle it? And we'll have recommendations.
Well, that's definitely something that Tracy needs to be involved in.
Sure.
The discussion.
Sure.
A lot of, a lot of moving parts in that farmer's market.
Yeah, I know.
Literally.
We meet with her quite often, the project updates.
And they discussed that at their last meeting, I think it was like a week or two ago. I told them what we knew about the schedule, so.
Good.
Why couldn't farmer's market be in Les Shirley Park?
Yeah, or the City Park, that's another option.
Part of the problem is um, the cars that they bring all their produce and everything into. Finding parking for that, for the, the cars is going to be the part of the problem. Um, and if, you know, if you can find parking, fine, but that's one reason that this is such an advan- advantageous. Uh, parking lot is because they can park their cars right behind the booth. And then you can take their produce out and and put it back in. I don't know what other farmer's markets do about, you know, vehicles.
They don't do that. I mean, if you go to any of the other ones that they're in fields and they, they don't have the cars backed up to the.
Yeah, I don't know where, I don't know what they.
One time.
My, my local one just says a, my local one just has a comment. They have the farmer's market in one location and everybody comes in and stages and sets up and then they actually take those vehicles. To a different parking lot and then they walk back. So that the, the vehicles for the farmer's market are off-site from the rest to allow for parking of the.
But again, you know, we have space problem, parking space problems, especially in the middle of summer, so. You know, I think.
Yeah, Second Street. Would be a good location, but that's also needed parking, so.
Yeah.
It's also probably a prime location for us to relocate to.
For what?
First to, to, for us to relocate.
Yes.
Like City Hall and things like that, put it way back by the uh.
Recycling.
Recycling depot.
But the least used parking.
Let me, how does the farmer's market committee feel? I haven't listened to that. I forgot they had one. How do they feel about?
They were hoping that they could potentially stay here until. The end of their season, maybe they end their season a little bit earlier than usual, like say the end of August or first of September, right for Labor Day maybe. But I mentioned to her, it's like you need to keep this in the back of your mind that if that, if all this area goes, you're going to have to move, so. They need to start thinking about where other options might be. But they're aware of that, but their preferences would be to stay here if they can do it one more year.
Just to stay here and and early.
For twenty four.
For twenty, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
And Les Shirley has parking.
What's that?
Les Shirley Park has parking.
Yeah, unlimited parking.
Yeah, but not many more limited than here when we have the farmer's market in the, in the.
Well, we have twenty, twenty to thirty. I would say twenty-five vendors, so that means twenty-five vehicles unless surely has what, five parking spaces?
Yeah, yeah, a lot more.
I think from just a setup and takedown perspective that. To move from one location to another mid-market season would really be hard.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. I agree.
You know, my preference from just being a volunteer there would be stays here in twenty twenty-four and it's just a little bit early and.
Yeah, so maybe Emmerich comes in in early September and starts their demo.
Yeah.
So we will do what we can to minimize disruptions to everybody, including farmer's market.
I always think about when we remodel the school. Probably no school and we still continued school. And I think a lot of times if we could teach middle school kids during a construction project. We can do anything with City Hall and Police Station.
Well, no, I, I, I agree. We can make that work.
Yes, it was a challenging time, but it.
Yeah.
It, it, it worked.
Yeah, and we had technology, you probably didn't have that.
Yeah, it was back in the old days.
Yeah. So, um. David, um, how about a- any other questions on um, schedule? For Canby Elementary? And what's your um, projected end date? David?
Um, so it'd be, it'd be hopefully by the beginning of the twenty twenty-five summer. That's the goal. It really depends on total uh, design. Um, I think we originally had ten months in there, but that was back when we've. Proposed on the job, so I think somewhere between ten and twelve months. But we'll dial it in during this next phase as the details come to light, um. We'll also update the schedule and have a more detailed construction schedule. Right now it's just in there as a placeholder. Um, so hopefully by mid-January, we'll have a, a schedule that matches the detail of our estimate.
You know which building you will start on first uh, with the school? Will it be the gym or the classrooms or?
Um, they'll go simultaneously, so it'll come in as um. Most likely it will come in and start with demolition throughout the site. We'll prepare the buildings to be joined, so there'll be some demolition on exterior demolition on the school, or sorry, on the gym. As well as the classrooms, um, to create space for the new lobby. And then as weather allows uh, throughout the winter, you know, if we can get a jumpstart on it and do the site work. Early in September, October, um, we'll try to maximize those dry weather days uh, and and do as much site work as possible. Um, simultaneously with the demolition of the, the uh, buildings. And then hopefully have some sort of dried-in uh, building framing that we can start working on the interior of the buildings through the winter months. Um, bring us back into spring and then uh, finish up uh, whatever we weren't able to accomplish due to the wet weather um, in the springtime.
Okay.
So the, I guess to. Answer your question, the whole site will be under construction when we start going.
Okay. When would you replace the roof? Of the hut?
So we, we'll have to figure out when, if that could happen, kind of in the first phase of dry weather or second phase, we. Our biggest concern there is um. We don't want to do any interior work, finished work, and then have it rain in there, so the roof would come pretty early. Um, in the process, if we can get it done, you know, first three, four months of the project, that would be ideal.
Thank you. Okay.
And then um, how about budget, David?
Yeah, so um, we're trending to be right on with our initial uh, budget. We did see some inflation, um. Costs come in, so the numbers we were tracking before, uh, we did see that like two to three percent. Hit, but this is only, we're only about fifty percent through our, our review of the D D set. So we're expecting to be able to release some of our estimating contingency, which will help offset some of that inflation as we um. Move in from D D to construction documents. And when we show you the number uh, at the end of January, um. Those should be leveled out and we'll have a better understanding of uh, inflation for the next six to seven months. Um, as we gear up to start the project and where those, um, if that will have any impact on the subcontractor bidding cost. Um, so again, we're, we're right around the twelve million. Uh, two hundred thousand dollar mark without adjusting for our estimated contingency from at seven percent down to five percent. Which we'd expect to carry from in the construction document phase.
Are you saying? The increase in inflation. You mentioned two to three percent. Are you, are you saying greater than the built-in contingency or that's covered by a built-in contingency?
So that's, that's covered by what we had previously shown you in um, in June. The last budget that you saw. So right now we're at twelve million, two hundred and nine thousand, but this is. We put this together for today, just to kind of show where we're trending, but we're only fifty percent through our review, so. As the uh, trade partners get us their, their pricing, um, we'll start to have a better understanding of. Of where that number is going to come in. I think as Jordan mentioned, the trade subcontractor trade market, um, starting to get more favorable as far as. Number of subcontractors we can uh, get to bid on the work. And their backlog, so people are eager for work, so we should start to see maybe some of those costs level out or come down a little bit, um, which will help. The overall number. Um, we're expecting the overall number to stay back uh, similar to where we priced it in May and June, which is right around just under twelve million dollars. That includes uh, design and permitting fees and five percent contingency.
I guess I've been unclear on the uh, permitting fees. Are we paying ourselves permitting fees on all of these projects?
Yes.
It also includes the F F and E furniture fixtures and equipment. So things that would be owner provided, there's a, there's a allowance in there for everything that you would need to make it operational.
So for example, the furniture that will go into the um, council chamber, we discovered.
Classrooms and.
Yeah, classrooms, things.
So the price is every, for everything.
It is.
Yeah.
There was possibility of something going over or some unforeseen circumstances, something like that. But there is um, a, a good contingency. To be able to try to address some of those things, but you're always going to have that in a project and it may exceed your contingency and we have to make some adjustments.
So during the City Hall Police Station presentation, did we get a completion date? For that?
Uh, I don't know.
Could we get?
Uh, I'm, I'm here, uh.
Jordan, okay.
Yep, I'm here, uh, City Hall. We have a start of August twenty-four and a completion of October twenty-five. So fourteen months, fifteen months, and then on P D. We have a start, it's a year, we have a start of August twenty-four, completion of August twenty-five.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess the other, the only other question I have is. Are there questions that are still outstanding in terms of uncertainties with? Uh, construction site or construction problems or have you, do you, have you figured that you've? Got all, ever all the questions answered or do you see, foresee problems coming up that you hadn't thought about before? I mean, that's a big question, Ben. I mean, every project has, has problems, but.
Sure, I think going back to what was, how was answered on the previous uh, on Jordan, on Jordan's um. Section, City Hall Police Station project. There's outside influence that, outside influences that could impact the project, design changes that. Based on decisions that you all make, um, but for what we have in as far as uh. Construction documents right now, I think we have a pretty good handle on, on the project. Um, the GeoTech report uh, came back and um, and the archaeology report, which actually was one of the bigger. Potential game changers uh, came back and it sounds like we're going to be okay to build where we want to build, um. And avoid the sensitive areas, so that's, that's huge. Um, because last time we talked about. Potential issues, that was one of the bigger ones, so now we're beyond that. Um, but as far as everything on site, I think we have a really, really good handle on, um. And I think it's going to come down to just design, design decisions, um. And changes that you all would make.
How much would we, I mean, the, the public has asked us to. Um, reduce the scope of the building. And my question, I guess, is how much would we have to reduce? The scope of the building in order to make any real dent in the budget?
You're talking about Canby Elementary?
Yeah, of course.
Um, do we have that slide? We have a slide that we showed you on May thirtieth.
Okay, good.
And it had the costs. Um, no, want to put all kind of caveats on that, that is, um. Did not go through and go through detailed numbering. What we did is we took the total cost. And then said, okay, if we didn't do this, and then try to get a cost and what that might be, go ahead and move back.
Rusty, I can, I can share, I can share my screen.
That's the other one. It's a different one.
David can pull it up, he's got it there. This is the one that Council actually saw, yeah, there we go.
Can you see?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. We have to take this with a grain of salt because these are purely. Based on my interpretation of reducing the scope, so Dust, I didn't really talk to Dustin about this or um, Jennifer, so. There are some, some things we could do to reduce the scope, completely change the current feel of the project.
Could you zoom, zoom one more time?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
So, um, number one, this was. Used, this section was used to just see where the Z C S estimate had come in. Um, based on current uh, costs, so when Z C S did this. Think their numbers are actually taken from two thousand nineteen and then obviously the pandemic happened and completely disrupted the market, so. There was about a thirty-four percent increase in costs that we saw over that timeframe. So the Z C S estimate has been adjusted for that, um. With the abatement and the roof replacement uh, added in. Um, so really, we could just skip over number one, it doesn't have any impact on the project at the moment. Um, the base package. Yeah.
I'm, I, I do want to make a point with that. Is that that is the four million dollar project everybody talks about.
Right.
There's no longer four million dollars.
Yeah. And that's twenty twenty prices, not that's current prices, but this was done in twenty twenty, right?
This was done in twenty twenty, but the only thing he did was added to thirty-four percent. So uh, without going into it and looking at. What they, they didn't do any drawings on it, so we don't know what their plans were for. You know, things going on in, in the, in the gym and in other places. It was just a price that they gave us. They gave us details on the first three levels. And then this was like, well, what would it cost to go ahead and finish everything out? And it was a guess. It was the four million and that is the, the four million out. There's other. Uh, factors that might have increased that cost or decreased that cost, it could change it, but there is no four million dollar project.
So one is just completing the two existing buildings.
Yes. Yes, and when, and I can't tell you to what degree, we have to get into some design to talk about that.
But does it also include?
But does it also include? The roof replacements?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's. Yes, number one is was really our attempt to to level up. The current, our current understanding of the the project versus what ZCS had done and. To really make that a hundred percent, we have to bring ZCS back and try to understand what they did fi- four or five years ago, so. It I think if we want to jump down to. Uh number two, this is more applicable to. Our the current project and the design. Um, this would get you just a base. Package like a, they call it white shell. Uh white box for the classroom and the gym, they would not be connected, um. It would bring both buildings up to code. Um. Very, very minimal upgrades to the inside, um. We'd obviously ADA upgrades, uh complete the seismic upgrades needed. Um get utilities, just like light switches and outlets and in lights, um new. Plumbing fixtures, so those type of things would be upgraded, but. The main connections to the city utilities would not be upgraded. Um. So this is just a really base base package and then the site would be. Would be brought up, um there'd be some site improvements uh for parking. Um and access throughout the site and then um a small. Community garden space.
Would it replace any windows in the in the classrooms?
Uh there would be some window upgrades, but it would not be with. The, I guess, quality of the windows that we're currently looking at in the full package.
And it'd be on which side of the building? Okay, okay.
And would that include the roof replacement too? I noticed the roof replacements in number one, but not number two.
Yeah, um so the roof, the one with the asterisk, that's the roof replacement that happened on the classroom building already. That was the membrane roof that was put on. Uh in base package without lobbying side upgrades, that would be a shingled roof on um. The gym building and the existing classroom building would remain as is.
That's right, totally understand. Can you just tell me the difference between one and two?
So low, uh number one was worked at ZCS. Priced. As well as the abatement and the roof replacement that has already happened, so there's been work done on buildings already, so they. Um. And Bruce, you can probably fill in on this, this is before our time, but. The abatement happened to the classroom building. And gym building and then roof replacement happened on the classroom building.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
And so in number two, this is just upgrading the gym roof with a shingled roof system.
And could you explain the utility? You said that they would be upgraded, but they wouldn't be hooked into the city?
So right now both buildings have um main line, main connections to the city. Main lines um that that are stubbed into the site and into their current location in each building. So we would make. All the bathroom spaces um. Functional, we'd make up, we'd upgrade the lighting. To a new uh. A newer system that's functional, all the switching would be updated uh and power, all the outlets would be updated. Um and then there would be some function of HVAC system, so whether it's just the split systems put in. Um. To just heat and cool the space appropriately. That's that's kind of the base value of each one of those things, so there wouldn't be a. One of the main concerns that Trevor has is that all the existing. Mainline connections are problematic, um. The the drain lines don't drain as well, the this power is um could be upgraded. Uh and there's no HVAC system at all, so um. Really, this is just the base package connecting onto the existing connections in each building, if that makes sense.
And there'd be. There would be no tech technology available in the buildings?
Uh I'm su- I'm sure you could get internet. Um installed. With wireless access for the whole building that or whole site.
Probably pretty basic, yeah.
But very basic.
I would think so.
This is kind of the no frills, um allow someone to be to walk into the buildings and be comfortable package. But functionality, this isn't taking into account any of the functions that the community said they wanted, so. Doesn't have dividing walls or um. Uh new bathrooms or. Uh a new gym floor, um. Or sorry, it has a gym floor, but very ba- the base package of that, um. No kitchen. Um and no upgrades to the site.
To go back to to number one, of that seven million dollars, how much of that? Was the roof replacement and the abatement? I mean, we've already. Paid for that, right?
Yep, that was seven hundred and fifty thousand. Roughly, I it's what I've had from, this is, again, this is from. Last May, so. Um. I haven't totally refreshed myself on that price, what I recall, uh seven fifty thousand is the number we had plugged in. And that came from Bruce and Rusty.
So is that the difference between one and two? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say is that we asked them just to look back because we had this original number and just to try to. Equalize it with what was going on, and so. One and two are very similar, there's maybe some subtle differences because we. There were things discussed, you know, it was ZCS that may differ from what was discussed with. CDO's team, but those those are just kind of showing the difference between the. That four million dollar project has it inflated over time to now, and that's that was. Aligning those, so we would understand. What that project would have been today, so. That's what number one is, is just to try to. Clarify between one and then two is where we would say a base package would be. With the work that's already been completed.
Yeah, that was the roof for the the school, the abatement, and then there was seismic upgrade in the gym. That they did.
Yeah, then um. Next, the base package with the lobby, so this would be. Um building the lobby. Connection between the two cla- the classroom and the gym space, um does not include the kitchen and. Does not include uh site upgrades. Um.
And and by just. What do you mean by site upgrades? The the landscaping?
The landscaping, the story circle, the new pathways. Um it would include some parking upgrades just to to meet code, but. Not what you've seen in the landscape drawings of the full schematic, it's the full package.
Would it include the the um? Overhangs and the back and the front and the paving uh in the on the nor- on the north side? Uh near the asphalt? And would it include um? I guess that would be it too, would uh is that also included? Or not?
Um so this was remove, uh the overhangs would only exist at the lobby, just the entryways to the lobby. Um. And then. The pavers in the back were not would not be part of it, it would probably just be a. We'd have to address. That area somehow, whether it's repaving it with asphalt, which. We'll have to get pricing on, make sure this is. Apples to apples or um. Or putting a seal code on on what's there now.
If we wanted to explore as as January, the January meeting comes, you want us to explore these more? As David said, we would need to look at what we really want to include. And what we don't want to include, and then we then we could give them information to provide a pricing on that scenario, kind of gives you. For lack of a better term, good, better, best. And how you could process through.
I think that. For this. Uh it just is, they're just order of magnitude numbers, if so, if you want to try to do something, you can say, well, it's in this one, not, we can interpolate. Whatever, but um. It'd be. A bit of a um. Of an effort to go ahead and and, you know, get from the council, include this, don't include this, and then price it all out. This will give you an idea to raise order of magnitude.
And when you look at something like number two. Well, then you don't have a tourist related facility.
Right.
Have a community center and that would be paid for from the general fund, not from TLT tax.
And I think that's something that we need to stress.
Yeah, I think that's the big difference is that, and we'd also probably have to pay back the money that we purchased. I don't know if that's true, we may have to pay back the money that we purchased the property with.
Right.
Because it would no longer be a tourist related, any. Stretch of the imagination, no, who would want to? I mean, you just, yeah. So. Those that those are the considerations, where do we get the six million bucks? Um. If we can't use TLT tax to make a community center.
The way that this all evolved. Was that uh the school had not been purchased yet, it was available. Um we weren't sure about the price, but we made an offer at that level before. And then um. When we started to talk, well, well, there was no money, there was no money to buy. The the uh the four hundred thousand dollars to buy the buildings, it was no money to upgrade. When we started talking about what might be able to happen there. It became apparent that, well, this is the kind of thing that if um. There was a, there was a gym or there were places for classrooms and those kind of things, that's something the tourists might use. So it was like, okay, well, now that's, but you got the potential for additional users, but you also have the potential for a funding mechanism. And so. If we were gonna go with a general fund project, which would not include any of the the TLT. We would have had to go through and do the um. You know, uh referral and everything associated with it. Or we could. Make some of the changes that we made. So that this would not have to be paid for by the residents. And because again, it would become somewhat of a tourism related facility. So that's kind of how this this evolved. But um the point that Lisa's making is that, you know, we can talk about. Uh. Using the the PFT or the TLT or whatever, but right now there's nothing else. And so that that's a whole nother question about whether or not you you it could be funded. And will probably involve a referral.
Yeah, I think we. We could just do the two buildings and somehow call it a tourist facility and redefine the use, it just wouldn't be anything that would be. Too useful or.
Right.
Uh.
I think we'd have a hard time selling it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the way it looks now, with just a new roof on it.
Yeah.
And the and the classrooms, the way they are and. That's not, I I. Yeah. It'd be a community center, period.
Yeah.
Then it's more about the use than. Than what the buildings look like, but.
Who has my point?
Yeah.
Who would, other than the community?
I, it it's pretty much the lobby that makes the whole thing. Useful as one facility.
And the exterior.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to stress again that this was done back in like late April, May, um. With just my interpretation of how we could sh- cut back on costs, so. And this will be recorded on YouTube, so if anyone's watching, just. Know that this is a very early draft of the previous schematic design um with just what I thought would be. Quick ways to cut out scope. And cost, um but this isn't taken to anybody else's. Design intent or idea what should be there, um. So really just to see what can be done, but it's not going to be what has been presented this whole way, this whole time.
And Jen? Alright, thanks David.
Yeah.
Then what is the timeframe? If you can recall. If. The city said, okay, let's do this, let's go for a referral. What is the, if we were to make? May. Is it February, mid-February or mid-January?
I'd have to look it up, it's it's quite early, let me look.
Yeah, we got like a month, I think. To be able to go ahead and make the decision and get all that started. If we were trying to do it in May and then it goes to mid-August, if you're trying to do it in November.
That's only if um. We didn't want to incur the extra cost. We can have a referral anytime we want, we just have to. Take the burden of the cost of the election.
Right, you're absolutely correct, thank you.
But it's it's not an insignificant number.
Right.
If there's a reason to to do it in the the election cycle as as presented.
Yeah.
Okay, so the last day for the May twenty twenty four primary election. Last day for county or district to file text of referral or prepare ballot title in order. For ballot title challenge period to be completed by the founding deadline, so basically March first, you have to be, everything, my. Ballot title challenge period has to be completed. By March first.
So we have to have a lot of the work done before March first for somebody to decide to challenge or not.
What are we even talking about?
Yeah.
Talking about. Making it a community center and and giving up the TLT funding and.
No, I think I think we're um. We're trying to come up with answers to. Some of our opponents about scaling it back and making it what they wanted it to be.
Right, and I think in the importance of that is there is no money to do that.
Right.
Right.
So you have to have a conversation about the other.
And that's what, that's what you're talking about now.
You're talking about a bond measure for a community center, is that what you're talking, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at the time, we.
I don't want to talk about it either, but I think. I think our. There's people that.
People need to understand that.
Right.
Either we would have to go that route to do a community center.
Right.
Or use TLT funds.
Then it would, then it would cost the citizens, my.
Yes.
If it passed, if it was to pass, it would cost them uh funding.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get a definitive answer on? Having to pay back the purchase price if we did can. Change it to a community center before the January ninth meeting? I have an email out to Ashley, I'll. Okay, thank you.
I don't. Anything definitive and on the other hand, it's. Four hundred thousand dollars, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is it four hundred or four fifty?
Four hundred, and it's something that could be paid over, you know, several years.
Uh there.
So we did when we borrowed it from the um.
Tab.
Tab, yeah, yeah, there was no.
What would make it more significant is the. Upgrades that have been made, the abatement issues.
Right.
Uh that would, that would be the real thing and we have those numbers, but just as far as the purchase price, it's like. I will point out, a huge consideration.
I think it was seven fifty. Was the number that David quoted.
Right.
Doing the abatement and.
It would be over a million dollars essentially in TLT funds that might have.
Yes.
There probably isn't. Any definitive. Answer on that.
Well, definitive is possible.
Yeah. And. Ballpark.
Opinion.
You know, one of the points I want to make, and I'm sure I'm overstating it, is that when it came time to buy the building, we didn't have the money to buy the building. We had to borrow from another account. In order to be able to do it, and so the idea that, well, let's do the four million dollar option. It's not, it's it's seven. And or seven plus. Yeah.
Yep.
And. No. Uh TLT.
And possibly eight with the payback.
That's sure, yeah.
Right.
So. Yeah, good point. Okay.
Can we go back to the slide? Yeah, I think we're completely finished.
This slide?
Yeah.
Sure.
Are you still there, David?
Well, we talked about.
Yeah, the last one is everything.
Yeah, but I still think that should.
You still want to see the slide?
Yeah, please.
Could you put that slide back up, please?
Uh, yeah.
Sorry. I think for the people that are gonna be watching this after the retreat is over. Yes, talk about everything. On that slide. So could you talk about number four? Please.
Um sure, yeah, so number four is the, this is based on the estimate that we presented. Um, sure, yeah. So number four is the this is based on the estimate that we presented with the schematic design package um back in uh April, May of last year or of this year. Um, so this is the full package. I don't know if you want me to go into more detail than that, but all the drawings that you've seen, the renderings, that's that's what's included in this package.
So the lobby, the park improvements.
Kitchen.
The kitchen.
The bathrooms, the extra bathrooms, the other.
And then also, can you um please point out the little fine print about the pricing does not include inflation? Can you talk about that?
Yeah, so um it's probably best to go to the next slot uh slide here. So you can see that we use the half a percent per month for inflation. So that's with this fifty percent design development rough order of magnitude budget that I showing right now. This is uh three hundred thirty-seven thousand to get us to August. And the previous estimate we showed, we showed a, it was six months, um and that number has been at put into the the current di- design development budget. So those that kind of came to light or came true of what we said it was going to. Um, so this is up about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, which is what you're seeing the bottom line, twelve million, two oh nine. Before the schematic design budget, we were at twelve uh nine nine hundred thousand, or sorry, eleven nine hundred thousand.
So I'm not going to do the math here, but if we were to delay a year, this project, what would that do to the price just with inflation?
Uh, it would go up close to five hundred thousand dollars mostly.
Yep.
So it feels like this project was is within our reach now and a delay means it's not going to happen.
You've also got buildings that are continuing to deteriorate.
Right.
Like we have leaks in the gym roof now.
Yeah, it's leaking again.
And they're, it's it's just coming down on the cement floor. It's not migrating over to the corner that had some softness. So um but the the classroom roofs are are good. They've got that new finish on.
Yes, this kind of looks like the whole place is starting to sink into the ground a little bit.
I'm sure there's mold in.
We went through and got it all. It could be, there could be some coming back, but that's what the abatement was about. We took out mold, we took out um asbestos, all kinds of things. He, we took out the gym floor, which was not required, but it was it it buckled and you know, so badly. So um if you go in and you go upstairs, for example, it's all the walls are, it's just strips of wood. Everything has been taken out.
And mold comes back really quickly.
Right, right.
Lot of experience with it. It's terrible.
Right.
And.
Yeah, it's it was possible to have to do some of the abatement again.
Jan, do you have a question?
I just have one question.
Please.
Yeah, Saber Wormwood again. I just wondered, um, could we possibly today or soon have a price uh comparison of uh the asphalt shingle roof for the gym? Uh, we we, I think we have it somewhere with the metal roof for the gym, but also I remember at the D R B meeting, um, I think it was in October, that one of the D R B folks mentioned about having possibly the cedar shake uh roof for the gym rather than the metal roof for the gym. And I just wondered if we could look at that pricing, just to give people, maybe at the January ninth meeting, an idea of what it would cost, um, because there was concern about the metal roof not being as village character like. But I know there's also reasons for the metal roof. Um, so anyway, just to to look into that, I think that might help people. It might help me, actually.
I know, I think that'd be interesting. I think it'd be great for people to see asphalt roof, metal roof, shingle roof.
Interesting, but you also have to take into account the maintenance. Maintenance and replacement.
Right, that all figures in, but if we could have that, I don't know if it would be too hard to get all that, but it might just be helpful for people that are interested. Um, anyway.
I think we could probably pull that together, Jen.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Jen.
I'd like to say one thing on that and one that is that um we've struggled with finding a good application where uh the asphalt shingles can be applied at the near vertical surface. There's a few locations where that's occurred, but that's not recommended. So there to go back with an asphalt shingle, though maybe feasible there, it may have warranty issues.
They have more what? Warranty issues.
Right, I'm just, yeah, I mean, if it was just a uh just a ballpark list of the different kinds of roofs and the problems associated with each one, you know, warranty issues, maintenance, just so that, because that's that was such a common theme of people's uh concerns, so why not address it right, right upfront?
The other possibility might be a fourth one, which I had heard from someone who does have certain um architectural experience, and that was to have maybe a combination because of the way that the roof is on that quantity hut. If there could be some sort of combination where the cedar shingles would be more visible at certain places, so have them there, but then have the asphalt uh where it wouldn't be as visible. Anyway, just putting it out there. Thank you.
Uh, that that would be a maintenance nightmare.
It would be maintenance and trying to connect those two surfaces on a on an o- rounded roof.
I don't know, I haven't got beyond the visuals of that, but.
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't see, you wouldn't see the asphalt.
Sure you would.
You, yeah.
Would be not visible.
There's a asphalt you would see because there's got to be a certain pitch. And then after you get to the point where it gets too flat, it's going to be another type of roof. You wouldn't see that, but you would see the asphalt.
Meaning if there were the cedar shingles, it would be the only visible place because they're more expensive.
Right.
And then the asphalt shingles would be where it is not visible.
Yeah.
You could save money. This is what I've heard.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. And we and that's, we could check that, but one, there's a problem with um both the cedar and the asphalt. Um, and it, the pitch makes a difference to when you they're effective or not, and there is a lot of flat roof up there.
We can certainly provide some analysis and then have um David's group look at it and kind of provide order of magnitude in the one dollar, two dollar, three dollar kind of concept.
And I know that we have, when we looked at roofs before, we did a lot of that comparison.
Yeah.
Um, the previous council did. So I know we have a lot of information about that. We needed to get out probably.
Yeah.
Thank you. So back at the time when we were going to do all the roofs. Okay, got you. Yeah, that was a few council meetings ago.
Back in the good old days?
Back in the good old days.
Um, and just for everyone, talking back to schedule, so right now what Remick's pricing is, everything that's in the current full design. Um, and so we could probably do a study between the different roof types, but as we've heard, people want to start to look at ways to save money. Um, if there becomes a point where there's like this full scale uh modification to the design, that J- January thirtieth date most likely won't happen. We'd have to think about a different date down the road to then present you other options. Um, because Dustin will need time to to design it and then we'll have to need some time to to price it. So just in the back of your mind, know that if the January ninth meeting leads to a bunch of changes um that you want to understand or see costs from uh the next, the January thirtieth meeting would be a challenge to be able to provide costs to you that are accurate.
Yeah, that's understood. Um, David, when you use the term demolition, when you talked about your initial things.
Yeah.
Is there a better word for you to use than demolition? Because we're not
Hmm.
demolishing the buildings.
Could use a selective removal. Might be a term we could use. Um, and that's, yeah, that is, I can see how that would be a shocking word to use in a situation like this. Um, but when we talk about demolition, that includes removing the mezzanine that's
Yeah.
inside there. It's demolishing or cutting the classroom building, um, taking a bunch of walls off, exposing that so we can make the connection to the lobby space. Uh, it's cutting up a lot of concrete in the gym to um get rid of the the ups and downs and the ramps that are in there. So there's, and then also the the ends of the gym, um, there's quite a bit of modification to those walls as well. So in one, in the sense of the word demolition, there is a lot of demolition going on, but I can definitely adjust that to maybe uh selective removal.
Redoing.
And and explaining it. I think your explanation just eased my mind quite a bit. So maybe, yeah.
Adding some detail.
Adding some detail to to what you mean by by that term. Thank you.
I like selective removal action.
Any other questions?
That contingency, is that for the entire length of the project or is that uh what what period does that cover, the contingency total?
Yeah, that's that's the suggestion contingency for this type of work um that the city would carry. That would be throughout the project. Um, that's really a recommendation that we would suggest, I know Jennifer would suggest, that um the city holds on to that amount of money. Your market, I guess, to use on things that change during the job. We may not need to use it at all. That would be unlike most other projects I've ever worked on, just because things happen, people change their mind and um you know, unknown things come up, but uh that would carry out through the entire project. So you could use it from uh something, some design, potentially some design costs, uh modifications or all the way through um to, you know, the final paint color or you want to add paint here versus there at the very end of the job. So it spans the entire project.
And if there's any leftover, it comes just returned to the city.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's, this is an overall construction uh or a project cost, so um, that number is held outside of our contract, outside of Cita's contract. It's really just within Bruce to manage.
What is phase one A E design and phase two? Is this the the design? We're in phase one and design now going into phase two, is that right?
No, we're in phase two.
We're in phase two now?
Yeah, yeah. So phase one was pre-design and schematic design, the programming piece. And then phase two is um the design development, construction documents. This includes all encapsulates all those subconsultants, including sustainability, um, audio visual, all those those type of things. And we did meet with the Oregon Energy Trust and we're continuing conversations with them to find um benefits.
Good, thank you.
I didn't understand that.
Energy trust, okay.
Are any other questions? Nancy's eyes are just big.
Yeah, they are.
Like, oh.
The way that we're set up, I don't, is Matt on for chance? Well, that's I sent him a schedule and I showed him starting approximately one.
Well, thanks everyone very much for all the.
Great job, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays. See you in a few weeks.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. I know Matt is not on yet.
Um, we could jump to something else if you would like. I think food is likely to be here in a little bit, right, Jen?
Pepper was picking it up around twelve thirty.
Okay. And then about one, uh, Matt will be on the line to talk about the financing costs. Um, debt service, everything associated with it.
Solve some other big problems.
And actually, those numbers are coming out pretty favorable.
I thought this was really a great presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did too.
Very pleased.
Yeah.
With the um numbers that we used when we were first doing the PowerPoints and all that and what we estimated for debt service, we're below that. We're below those numbers now.
That's.
I mean, we were we were over them for a short period of time. No, it's just you being conservative. So uh there's no scare there. There's one um which has to do with the uh food tax eighty ninety-two, and the number is actually nine hundred now. But that is, um, so it's eight thousand dollars. Um, not to the good, but it's only, it's only missed by eight thousand, but at this time, if you recall, we when we did the P F T, we were at thirty-four thousand dollars below the estimate that we had. Um, first quarter, which closed the end of September. Um, we collected thirty-four thousand dollars more than we did for the same quarter last year. So we anticipate that our collections will be up. Made up for the difference last year. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
So do we want to jump to another topic or?
Well, uh, did you get, did you go through this handout and we go through this conversation? Hand out a little bit more. Um.
Um, a lot of it is Matt's.
Okay.
Well, actually, just the top part is Matt's. If you'd like, we can go over the sources of funds.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. I also handed it out to you.
Want this one, right? That one?
Yeah.
One you were asking about?
Yeah.
Oh, one, two minutes. There we go.
Wonder if we can get a copy for Jan, so she's not going to stand up and.
Yeah, Jen, I have the actual copy. Well, if we go to where the uh sections are that are up on the screen, looking down um on the right-hand side, which is non-tourist related, tourist related, those are the funding sources. And the thirty percent of the one point five percent increase that we've already imposed, um, I had estimated three ten, but it came out to three oh nine, three seventy-five. And this is based on last year's collections of all of these funds. So they'll potentially be higher this year. So that's that amount. Seventy percent of the one and a half percent increase comes out to seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. And um I'd estimated seven fifty. Fifty percent of the P F, or taxable food. Um, that's the one I just explained. We had estimated uh eight ninety-two, five. We came out just short of that. Um, we're estimating it's going to be nine hundred this year. Uh, and then we did two transfers. And the way that the motion was made was that the city manager had the latitude to make up that three hundred thousand or whatever the difference was um at budget time and make a recommendation to the council about where those funds might come from. And we talked about the R V reserve uh revenue funds. And then transfer from the general fund reserve. And that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's a balancing number. Those are balancing numbers.
All right, I'm totally lost, um. I'm back at the right-hand side here. The two hundred thousand and the hundred and fifty thousand, what are, what are those?
Uh, the two hundred thousand. Let me see. When we did the numbers back and I, I think this might have been as far back as like, you know, January, February. When we were doing those numbers and coming up with the potential ways to pay for the project. The figures that we had. Um, came out about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars short.
Okay, so these are, these are numbers that we needed to find sources for.
Yeah, I think.
These are annual contributions.
Yes.
To cover debt service.
Yes.
Uh. And I'm not sure about the RV park reserve, but the general fund reserve. Uh. It's, it's less of a. Uh, we're taking money out of our general fund reserve and more that we're slowing our contributions.
Yes.
To the general fund reserve.
Yes.
Uh, is that? Is that similar to RV park or is that pretty much a? A good chunk? Was it maybe three hundred or three hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
That from the last. Year went into the RV park reserve?
Fifty-nine thousand went into reserve, three hundred thousand went into general fund.
Three hundred thousand went to general fund.
Right, yeah. So, just as you said, it's slowing, but also the numbers that we use a year later are usually higher. So eventually, we would not need to do the two hundred and the one fifty. Because the PFT would be higher, the um, the one percent, the one and a half percent increase that we did in the uh, tourist. Tourism room tax. Instead of being three oh nine, that might be three fifty. Or something. So, over time, those numbers, there are numbers in here, they're. Pretty reliable or have been over time to increase.
So accurate that we're still. Adding to both of those reserve funds or just slowing the contributions.
Yes.
And current reserve. Uh, general fund reserve is.
I'd have, I can tell you that after, after lunch.
Okay. Does close to three million dollars sound?
I think it is.
Yeah.
Okay, what is the sixty-eight point seven five oh million dollar estimated tax room?
That's. That's the total amount that we. Collect against.
Okay, so that's the revenue that they bring in?
Yes.
Okay, and we get one point, that's the one point five, that times thirty, that's the, is that the newest increase? The one point five?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we had a conversation a little while, a week or two back, that the um. TAF is collecting tremendous amount in the uh, in its reserve. And uh, I think it's a good time for a conversation with the, the committee. Because they're recognizing there's less requests for projects. And um, they were very supportive when we bought the um, property. They said, no, we're loaning, they didn't even require it to be a loan, we offered to make a loan. And uh, for the four hundred thousand dollars and they gave us that, we paid it back in two years, I think. So, um, I think there's a possibility of. If we need more money to operate, if we, you know, those kinds of things, that potentially. If it's still a tourism-related facility, that, that's another source of the funding. And when you look at NACUS. And the funding on it, when we pay the, the debt service and, and things. Uh, we still have the four eighty-six, one twenty-two, and that's the number that I've been trying to protect for uh, operations.
Forty-six represents the operations?
That's the funds that I've been saying, there's, there are.
Annual operations fund.
Okay. Coming from where?
From the TLT, there's a balance, a positive balance.
From where?
I'm doing the one and a half percent TLT.
Okay. Okay, so. The, the transfer or the slowing down of the. Funding of the RV park reserve funds. Um, that's all TLT, right? Reserve.
What's the question again?
It's, um. The money that goes into the RV park reserve is all TLT.
I don't think so.
It's not, it's.
I think it's.
The income, it's the income from the rev- revenue, uh, from the RV park, right? The overall re- revenue. Um. Okay, and. So that would be, that's a. That's not exactly general fund, but it's a reserve from, from our, our general budget.
Yes, when there is that money left over, some usually finds its way some point in the general fund.
The what?
Usually finds itself into some point in the general fund.
Uh huh.
Or it can go into the RV park reserve if we think it's adequately funded.
Okay. And then transferred from general fund reserve. What is that?
Right now, I think that we've recently been putting like six hundred thousand dollars in. And I think there's something in the. One of the documents that they're looking for three hundred thousand, try to maintain it.
So, when we say the general fund reserve, we're talking about ending balance?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're taking, we're, we're slowing the contribution.
Okay.
But we're still above the three hundred, which I. Don't remember what document it was in.
It's the audit. They want certain number of months.
Yeah.
Um. Uh. Okay. The TAF, okay. So this is where you're thinking that the TAF fund reserve would be for potential operating costs.
Potentially.
Okay.
It all, it could also be for projects. You know, we've been talking about it.
Okay. So that's where we're gonna probably get the most. And then the Chamber of Commerce.
All right. It's Tommy John.
You're like.
Thank you, Trevor.
Trevor. Thanks, Trevor.
Add a bite of everything still.
Can't get the last word in with that guy. Outsmart.
Last bite.
Yeah. So outsmarts me every time.
And then how much we get four hundred thousand a year usually from the Klatzip County? TRT?
They send us a little bit less than the four eighty-one, but I think she's using forty-one now.
Okay, so we're talking four eighty-one for all three of these, forty-one times three.
And the four eighty-one. Is the seventy percent.
So both the TAF fund annual reserve and the TRT fund annual reserve. You're not allocating any money there, but that's where we are going to have some discussions about how to. Apportion that.
Yeah.
Differently perhaps.
Yes, and what we have in those relatively soon because we're coming up on budget.
So is this a, a good time to break?
Yes.
For lunch? So you think that Trevor comes and eats the rest of it?
You think the debt service for the school is going to be about seven hundred and seventeen thousand?
I can find it.
Seventeen?
Seven seventeen?
Yes.
So, okay.
And that's, that's what Matt will be talking about.
So the handout that you gave us right now and the one that's on the screen has some different numbers.
Oh, the, the, the top part, I asked Jen to not include because this is a mass presentation.
Oh, okay.
So we went from the sources.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. Okay, so time for. Okay, we're journeying. Okay, we're gonna call back to order our um, city council work session and retreat after a little lunch break. And we're back on the schedule with Matt Donahue. Our financial advisor.
Yeah. How you doing, Matt?
Doing well. How's everybody?
Good.
But thanks for your patience.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
I have a question. Does that instrument behind you require a bow?
Uh, no, uh, you can pluck it with your fingers too.
Like a bass, okay, good.
Yeah, which is how I play it. I don't know how to bow it at this point. Haven't gotten there yet. Usually, usually it's in my living room, but I had to make room for my Christmas tree, so now it's, it's behind me.
Okay, understandable. Um, Matt, I'd like you to go through and talk about um, the uh, the bond funding. Uh, where we are now, what the um. And I think, well, I think you have something that was sent to you by.
You want me to share the?
Yeah, once you.
Yeah, by, by Ron.
That's not the whole thing, though.
Yeah, I don't have that one.
Which one is that?
The one, I asked you to just do just the bottom part. So that we could save the top for Matt.
So that would, it's in three different slides and that's what he's in.
Yes, okay.
So.
So the, there's part of the top and then the second part of the top of the law.
Yeah, uh, sure, so, um, well.
Hold on.
Okay.
I think I was playing with that PowerPoint at one time.
You guys wants to advance.
Took out all the frilly stuff.
And it won't stop. I can't stop that.
It just keeps blending into the other.
It's not gonna work.
She didn't hand it out to you.
Yeah, we have these.
That's his information. We were just trying to separate it out from the presentation this morning. So if you just want to go through. I hope you have that.
It's important that we have it on the screen also.
Yeah, do you want me to share the debt service schedules?
Sure.
Okay, let's see if I can do that.
It's a lot harder to understand than when. When we.
For our audience at home.
Yeah.
Cause they're all gonna watch the show.
All right. So, um. These are, uh. Estimated debt service schedules that I updated last week. Um, and uh, you know, just the, I guess the good news is that rates have been going down. So it looks like some of these schedules are, are lower, they are, they are lower than what we had estimated in. In, in prior months. So this first table and all of these uh, tables show principal payments. Interest payments, which are semi-annual, and then sum it up in the last column to the right to be annual. Uh, debt service by fiscal year. And.
Could you please zoom up just a little more?
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, thanks.
Sounds good, okay. So this is the, this is the combined annual debt service estimates for all of the projects. Um, over the thirty-year amortization period. And the way we have been structuring it is what we call level debt service, which is approximately equal payments. Every fiscal year, when you add up the, the annual principal payment and the semi-annual interest payments. And they bounce around a little because bond payments, you can only cut them up into increments of. Five thousand dollars, that's the smallest increment, so. That's why you'll see it, the totals bounce around uh, by, you know, a few thousand dollars here and there. But as you see, it's essentially the estimate is just a, just under two million. Uh, dollars a year for the combined uh, project debt service. About one point nine. You know, one point. Nine, one million. So the next page where we start breaking them up, and these are the numbers that. Um. You'll see. Filtered into uh, Ron's report there, um, that you were showing earlier on the presentation. So this is for the city hall. Portion. And as you can see, that debt service is around nine hundred and seventy-five. Thousand dollars. Annually. And then. Uh, ending in fiscal year twenty fifty-four, uh, as are all these. Uh, schedules, so the. The structure is amortizing each project over the same time period. So it's not like one is paid off earlier than the other, they're all paid off over thirty years, just. The portion of the project size is the portion of the debt service of that two million dollars of debt service that's associated with each project. So this is a Cana Beach Elementary project. Uh, and you can see that debt service is about four hundred and seventy.
Is, is this for the, is this for the police department?
This is a Cana Beach Elementary.
What's, what's the police department is? Okay.
It's uh, the, the last one here, it's. So this is police station where it's about five, little under five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, annually. Any questions about the? Debt service schedules?
Is there any penalty if you pay it off early?
So, uh, the traditional prepayment structure for uh, municipal bond is that the. First ten years of principal payments. Aren't able to be paid off early. And then there is a, no penalty to pay off any principal payments after ten years. That's the standard.
Okay.
If the city wants additional flexibility for prepayment. Then we can move that date up. You know, nine years, eight years, seven years, even five years. Uh, moving that date up will come at a, a penalty of uh, interest cost at the time of issuance.
Matt, do you have any thoughts on doing that? Right now, we're at a pretty, pretty big high.
Yeah, yeah, you know, um. I generally think that, uh, you know, we could weigh those options and you could see how much uh, it would cost to move. Um. The, that prepayment up. Um, you really may be kind of betting on a refinance in the future. Uh, in the next five years rather than over the ten years. Um, and that's, you know, it's, it's kind of a gamble because we don't know what future interest rates will be and. You know, feels like we're, you know, a little bit above average over, you know, historical. Uh, rates, um, but not by much. So it's a, it's a choice between, you know, what your payments are gonna be currently. Uh, versus what's the value of an option. Um, in the next several years. Uh, I generally advise, you know, unless there's some compelling reason that the issuer would. Have a, uh, you know, some influx of money. That they are fairly uh, confident about. Um, you know, if that's the case, then yeah, we can move the prepayment up. To match when that uh, influx of extra money is coming in. Um, otherwise, you know, I think getting the, the best rate at the time. Uh, we're using a standard prepayment uh, for the first ten years is, is, is usually. Uh, how I think uh, an issuer should go.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Any other questions about debt service?
How do, how do you see interest rates for this year going?
Well, let me switch over to a different.
To the crystal ball.
Yeah, yeah, let me switch over to my magic eight ball. I'll show you a, a different graph. Um, I always like to say. That I'm much better at telling you where rates have been and where. Um, I always like to say that I'm much better at telling you where rates have been and where they are currently. Rather than where they're gonna go in the future. But I'll give you.
Back on Sanders Street.
So this graph here with all these squiggly lines, uh, which in, you know, uh, one sense is an illustration of how rates go up and rates go down. Um, and they move around uh, every day and uh, uh, you know. Uh, it's anyone's guess what, what the future holds. Um, however, uh, we can see that right now we're in a trend. Right here at the, I don't know if I can highlight this. Uh, maybe not, but anyway, you see the far. No, that's just highlighting the whole thing. You see in the far right here, we've had a pretty good run down over the last two months. Um, you know, the blue line shows the twenty-year interest rate, the red line shows the ten-year. And the green line shows the one-year uh, interest rate for triple A rated municipal bonds. Uh, this is an index, they go out and they see where those uh, rates are for triple A bonds and they average them every day and produce this index. So the average over this ten-year period for the twenty-year, um, you see in this table up here is two point eight four percent. And we're currently at three point one uh, six percent. So a little bit above the ten-year average. Um, you know, the high was back in two thousand thirteen and then uh, the low was in the, the summer of twenty twenty at one point oh eight percent. But definitely the trend here, and I think most forecasters and um, economic observers. Expect rates not to spike back up unless there is unexpected uh, inflation that um. Turns the Federal Reserve from a expectation of lowering the short-term rate to an expectation of increasing those rates to fight inflation. Uh, the data that's come in recently and last week, there was a meeting in which the Federal Reserve. Said that they would expect, they, well, they didn't raise rates at that meeting and they were projecting that they would lower interest rates three times. Uh, in twenty twenty-four. So as long as that expectations kind of holds, we'll be at these levels and if. It looks like the economy is moving more into recession. Uh, territory, then the Fed will try to juice the economy uh, ahead of that. And lower rates even more, which would cause longer term rates to go down. So that's kind of the underlying economic trends of it. Uh, another part of, of bond rates, you know, for an individual issue is the, the supply of bonds. Um, out in the market. And looking out into the calendar of the early year of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we don't really see a lot of supply coming out of Oregon. So that's a good dynamic for an issuer. Because the buyers will want, will fight over the existing supply to put the money that they have. Uh, into play for their in- investors or for their uh, municipal fund. And that uh, is beneficial uh, to those issuers who are in that low supply. Um, situation.
Do you think the election uh, for twenty twenty-four and the wars that we've been involved in will have any effect at all on the interest rates?
Well, uh, as I was telling Bruce last week when we chatted, um, interest rates generally move lower when there's bad news. And higher when there's good news. And you know that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yay, bad news.
Yeah, it's right. So, you know, we need, we need to consider our, our karmic, uh, you know, balance when the, when rooting for one or the other, but. Uh, you, you know, the, the, and maybe I'm just a pessimist, but it seems like the specter of bad news in the upcoming year is more heightened than the specter of, you know. I don't know what the opposite of a specter is, I guess it's like a good ghost of good news uh, in twenty twenty-four, so. Uh, yeah, and that's why it's so hard to predict, you know. Um, cause the interest rates move based on future events, which, which we don't know, but yeah. Well, more, more wars, international turmoil, um, you know, bad uh, reports from companies, bad job reports. Uh, that's all good for interest rates going down. Um, you know, I think there's some. If you wanna, if you wanna get into conspiratorial um, section, then the, the, the election coming up, uh, interest rates uh, going down and. You know, gas prices going down and the economy going, going up would be better for the incumbent uh, president, but. I don't know that there's uh, that much actual uh, factual historical data to support that theory, but that's a theory.
Yeah, I have, I have a question, I'm sorry, Matt.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, we were talking about a thirty-year bond and I'm curious as to why we're looking at one, ten, and twenty-year.
I was just gonna ask that question.
Yeah, that's a good question, um. So uh, we, this is just the graph I had uh, available. Um, and uh, it is actually probably a better indicator of what your overall. Cost of the issue will be is the twenty-year benchmark. Um, and the reason for that is, yes, there's principal payment, the final principal payment. Um, is in thirty years. But the city will be making principal payments in one year, two years, three, you know, every year out to thirty years. And so the way the bond issue works, as opposed to if you go get a loan from a bank, which just has a single rate. The bond issue is the principal payment in the first year ha- has an interest rate. And then in the second year, it has a, an interest rate. So there are interest rates for all of those years from one to thirty. And when you average that out over the issue, it basically, a thirty-year issue basically comes on average as a twenty-year rate, if that. If that makes sense.
So the interest rates change every year?
Yes, the interest rate on a principal, on that particular years of principal is different every year.
Oh, and how much, how much of uh, interest, how much in dollar amount of interest is there for every interest? Uh, reduction or every one percent interest uh, uh, upgrade?
That, that is a good question, let me um. Let me go back to the, or I can. See if this is. So the way we measure it um, is in present value. Of the, the payments, I mean, I could run the annual interest rate. Um. Schedule, you know, one percentage point higher, one percentage lower, and provide you, I can't. Can't do that kind of math in my head, but uh, we can certainly get that for you. Um. Let me see, I'll stop the share here. And I'll share. This. So this is kind of getting into the weeds here, but we have this measure of the present value of a one basis point change. So if we kept this structure the s- the same. And uh, interest rates moved up a single basis point, so let's say from four point two three percent to four point two four percent. Then it would cost the city in today's dollars about twenty-five thousand dollars. So if you, if rates go up, um. A whole percentage point, that's a hundred basis points, so then you're adding, you know, two zeros. On that, and that's two point four million dollars, two point five million dollars of extra cost. But if it goes down, then it's uh, two point five million dollars less. And that's spread o- overall, the whole thirty-year structure of payments.
So that's twenty-five thousand dollars for one tenth of percent interest.
Um, one hundredth of a percent of it.
One hundredth of a percent, oh my god.
Yeah, uh, that's what we, what we call a basis point here in our industry jargon. So this. Uh, some other good news is actually like, right after I ran these numbers, is that interest rates went down fifteen basis points. Because of the Federal Reserve meeting.
I hear you, my mic is off.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm good. There you go.
Okay, so like the day after I ran these numbers, the Federal Reserve, and you may have seen in the news. Made that announcement that they're gonna keep rates the same and may cut them next year. And so rates in the market immediately went down fifteen basis points. Um, so these estimates are actually a little higher than what we get if we were in the market today. But since we're not gonna be in the market until March. It provides at least a little cushion uh, around these, these particular estimates. So the other thing I'll highlight here uh, is this all in TIC, that's the all-in true interest cost. Of the financing, which includes all of the fixed costs of issuance as well as the interest rates on the principal payments. And you can see uh, about four point three six percent is what you can consider your kind of annual percentage rate for the financing under these assumptions.
That's the average percentage over thirty years?
Yes. Including the effect of the cost of issuance at the time of finance.
So if it went up a hundred, one hundredth of a percent. Then that would be twenty-five thousand, if it went up one full percent, it would be two point five million?
Of extra costs, uh, of that, yeah, exactly.
Of that, for that year or for the full thirty years?
For the full thirty years and uh, discounted back into today's dollars. Um, which is the, you know, financing uh, mechanism for comparing costs. Of a interest payment in twenty fifty-three to an interest payment in twenty twenty-seven, for instance. The total, the total debt service would be higher than that number over the thirty years. But because we don't count a dollar in twenty fifty-four the same as we do a dollar in twenty twenty-four. The, we, we turn all of those payments into a, as of today, cost difference. Uh, between those two rates. Now we're really, we're really getting into finance two oh one, um.
Yeah, let's dial it back a little bit to some. Broad, basic questions. The thirty-year municipal bond. Would be pretty standard for funding a city project like we're looking at?
Yes, yes, and there's uh. There's rules around how long you can borrow based on how long the useful life of your projects are. And um, in Oregon, you can't issue this type of bond, this full faith and credit obligation where you're pledging the city's. Um, all available legal uh, revenues. You have to stay within that average life. Um, so the useful lives of these projects are uh, are long because they're buildings. And, you know, the accountants will tell you that a useful life of a building is forty years. Um, and so you have to compare the weighted average useful life of all the projects. So if you spend twenty million on a building, then that's. Uh, you know, uh, gonna weight your average life of all your projects toward that forty-year life. So as I, going back to, as I said before, about how you have different interest rates for this, different principal payments. We compare that to the average life of any one dollar of principal that's issued. And as here, as you can see, the average life of all the principal from the principal paid in year one to principal paid in year thirty. Comes out to be just under twenty years. So you can think of kind of the average principal being twenty years in this issue. So your average life of your projects needs to be over twenty years. And uh, given these projects were well within that, is my understanding.
And city currently has a triple A bond credit rating?
Uh, no, it's a double A.
Okay. And what is that based on?
What is the double A rating based on?
Yeah.
So uh, it's a rating given by a uh, firm called uh, Standard and Poor's, I don't think I have that here, but. And it's essentially based on their opinion of the city's creditworthiness and ability to pay back the bonds. Relative to similar entities all across the country and what their ability to pay back the bonds, what their creditworthiness is. And the highest grade, as you, as you refer to, is triple A. Uh, and then it goes into the double A category, it's double A plus, double A flat. Um, double A minus, and then it's the. Single A category, and then below that, you get into more speculative grades, but. It's essentially based on the local economy. The uh, financial strength of the issuer of the city. How much debt and uh, pension obligations the city already has. And what the management and governance of the uh, city is.
And, and which AA are we?
Two.
Double A. No, we're double A, but he said there was a plus and a.
Uh, double A flat.
Wow, okay.
I mean, just.
With this much, if we, if we do this, with this much debt, would that reduce our bond rating?
Uh, there is the potential for that because as I just said, that there is um. Uh, that's one of the categories. Uh, but um, given the sources that you have for this and the existing financial condition of the city. I don't expect this to negatively affect your bond rating.
So it looks like from, from reading uh, at the bottom here of your chart from your list, looks like we're paying, I, I'm doing real quick math. Thirty to thirty-one million dollars for the overall three loans, is that right?
Um. So the, this is structured to, we'll go to the sources and uses page here. So this is structured to the, to cover uh, thirty-two point seven million for projects. And then um, the extra amounts for cost of issuance and uh, underwriters fee.
And is that for all three projects?
That is all three projects, yes, so fourteen, well, yeah, sixteen million. Allocated to the city hall. I'll go down here, seven point seven allocated for the Cannon Beach Elementary, nine million for the police station. I'll go down here, seven point seven allocated for the Cannon Beach Elementary, nine million for the police station.
Now, when you're talking about the useful life of the buildings. Would it be, um, advantageous to the city? Or would it be a, a high cost to look at a forty year payment?
Well, you know, there's, uh, there's, on the one hand, on the other hand, uh, kind of, um, analysis there. So, uh, the forty year would lower your annual payments. Uh, but would increase the total cost, cause you know, it's like going from a fif- fifteen year to a thirty year mortgage, you know? So you're paying more interest overall, but your, your, uh, annual payments will be lower. Um, and just like a mortgage, although it's not prepaid at any time. You do issue forty year. You know, we, you will have the ability to refinance the last thirty years of. Payments, um, after ten years and no penalty. And what it is, it is adding on a bunch of interest, I mean, and I'm happy to run those two sets of numbers and. You can look at that and. Decide if the, the juice is worth the squeeze, as they say.
What are the prepayment options with a forty?
Uh, same, same, like principal payments for ten years and anything after ten years is no penalty.
We're having too much fun.
Bruce, do you want me to put up the schedule? Uh, next, I think that was also on your, on the agenda. So this is schedule that we've, uh, worked with the city to lay out, uh, for the issue. The whole process takes about eight to ten weeks from getting started on the. Documentation. Uh, to getting the money in the bank. So. We are, uh, getting started in earnest for the new year. Uh, we're targeting, uh, the, uh, February sixth council meeting. For the approval of an authorizing and delegating resolution. Um, and then Wednesday, March sixth, month later, for the competitive sale of the bonds. Essentially, we put out a big prospectus document to the, uh, national underwriting com- community. And set a time, uh, and date. For, uh, underwriters all over the country to bid on the city's bonds. And we award the city's bonds to the lowest, uh, interest cost bidder. So it's kind of like, uh, an auction. Uh, for, uh, the city's bonds. So the underwriters really have to put up their lowest cost. Bid if they want to, uh, purchase the bonds to then sell to their investors. At that day, when we accept the bid, then the rates are, are locked in. And, uh, we have a period of time, uh, to get. The documentation. Together, signatures, set up the wire, the money to the city. And then on the morning, uh, Wednesday, uh, March twenty-seventh. Uh, funds are delivered to the city and the, the issue is closed and the, uh. The interest, uh, starts to grow on the bonds. So those are the big dates. And in between that, you can see we have a lot of other tasks that generally are around drafting that bond prospectus. Which we call the preliminary official statement or the P O S. And the notice of, yeah, it's not what you think it stands for. As my colleague says, that's what he used to refer to his first car as, but, uh, this is, uh, preliminary official statement. And a notice of sale. Uh, which is the prospectus for investors to review and disclosure document for the issuer. Uh, we go to, uh. Credit to Standard and Porers Credit Rating Agency in order to get, uh, the rating assigned to this particular bond issue. And we have the authorizing and delegating resolution, uh, drafted and, and submitted to council. So those are kind of the big tasks which, um, you know, take a fair amount of work from staff and, you know, we're. Um, but we're there to help things along and, and act as, uh, you know, consultant and member of the staff to. Um, get these tasks in order, in order to have a successful sale. And then you also have your legal counsel, uh, who is, uh, reviewing these documents and drafting the. The legal documents for the issue, uh, along the way with us as well. Any questions about the schedule?
Uh, yes, i- if at any time we need to delay a portion of it, is that possible? Or does everything have to move at the same rate?
You mean, like, maybe delaying the financing for one of the projects?
Exactly.
Yeah, uh, you can do that up until pretty much right before the sale. Once you have the sale, you're locked in, but anything, anything leading up to that, uh, you can change or cancel.
What, excuse me, what happens in the market if, uh, a change like that is made? Does that make, um, potential investors nervous? Or is it just part of doing business?
Well, I think it depends on the degree and the timing of the change, um. Certainly, but it, it is part of. Part of doing business, I mean. And the, the ideal is that, um. Before we post that P O S or notice of sale, that, that we know what we're doing and we're gonna follow through with it. But there are changes that are made all the time in the market, um. And I know that's, that's about a two week period, right? So think, things happen, to paraphrase a old bumper sticker, but. Um, I think we would not, it wouldn't be a good look to cancel things. You know, right at, uh, you know, right before or change things significantly right before, but. We do disclaim everything in the notice of sale saying like. We can change whatever we want right up to the point of the, the auction. You know, the underwriters. Have to do their own credit work, so they put in some work, uh, here and they have to, you know. Calculate what they wanna bid and make sure they have funds and the investors lined up on the other side, so. Um, yeah, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be good luck, but it wouldn't be, you know, fatal for the city's ability to. Come back into the market at a later, later time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the schedule?
So Bruce, um. Laurie's retirement date is the end of February. Beginning February second. How does the schedule impact a, a staff change?
Um, we'll be working a lot with Matt. And we'll also be starting interviews. Beginning of January?
Yeah, the goal is, the goal is to start on, uh, January second. So we're, uh, we're gonna, working with staff schedules to get everyone lined up and then, um, we're gonna start doing interviews. And then we receive four hours.
Okay.
And what'll happen during that time is it will, once Laurie leaves, we'll be relying a lot more on Ron.
And then who's our, who is our legal representation? Is it Ashley's firm?
No. Ashley's firm is involved. Who is, um?
Uh, it's Cor- Courtney Downs from Mercer O'Shanon.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's done.
Okay.
All right, any, any other questions about schedule or anything else on financing that? Can help with, uh, you all today?
Anybody have any other questions?
At the moment, I'm sure there'll be one, but right now I can.
If you email me any questions, you can get them to Matt.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll get into the serious stuff.
Going back to the, uh, original.
Agenda.
Agenda.
Yeah, so I would say we're finished with projects. Right now, and then make sure if we have questions, we send them to Bruce and send them to the appropriate. People to answer those questions. And so I think that we're ready to go into the zoning and housing section of the agenda.
I mean, can I ask a question? Does, um, all this information, is this? Put the. And I recognize you could change your mind on this answer, but does it put you all in a position of some confidence? Or is it making you more nervous? And is there anything we can do to try to potentially allay any concerns?
Well, I, I mean, I think whenever you're dealing with these amounts of money and the city and the responsibility of. Of it, I, it's not a matter of allaying concerns. I think you've provided us with a lot of information, which is great. Doesn't mean that you're not still nervous about it.
Sure.
You know, I mean. Uh, cause it's a lot of money and it's scary. It's real scary to, you know, borrow that kind of money.
Right.
So I think that. I understand it more now. But I wouldn't say I was less nervous.
But yes, we should acknowledge. That it, it's something we're all taking seriously. It's something that there are serious concerns in the community. Uh, that we're taking on, uh, these projects, so. I, I think a lot of it is, how can we reassure people, uh, that? That this is a reasonable, uh, step to take. Uh, some of it is because. It's only gonna cost more to do it later.
Right.
Uh, you know, so I, I think there are some things along those lines, but, uh. How can we assure people that we're in a good position to do this?
I, I think it also has to do with how risk adverse people are, you know, some people do not follow the money. They do not have a credit card, they do not ever borrow money, they don't, you know, that's just how they operate. Other people do, you know, so you can't really. Answer to that. I mean, this is, this is a risk. Type thing, anytime borrowing of money is, but we think that we can. Take, we think that we can handle it, that's what we're saying. We can't ever guarantee it. That's impossible. We don't know if there's a war tomorrow or who knows, I mean, you know, just. Based on what we know now. I think it's important that people know we're not just being frivolous and handing out checks to people as if it didn't matter, that we're really considering it.
I, I think it, uh, presentations have been very good. I think they've been a lot. More clear than what we've had in the past and, um, I think it answers quite a few questions. I guess my big, biggest concern is that so much of this is resting on tourism money. And at the same time, we don't wanna be, you know, the tourist destination of the world, so I. That balance is, is, I don't know, we need to take into consideration and. Um, I think that's where a lot of people are concerned because it is based on tourism money for the most part. And, um. Yet we don't wanna, you know, people don't want to attract tourists here overwhelmingly.
Okay, we apologize for a little technical delay, but.
Go everybody.
Let's see. Fixed it.
And our conversation was only, had only to do with the reviews of the lunch.
Lunch, yes, and, and a book or two, a TV show. Okay, so Bruce, you were speaking.
Yeah, with the, um. The funds that we're using for repayment. Those have historically increased annually. Something can always happen and make a big change, but, um. There. Using, uh, the analogy of like the first house you bought. It was, you know, kind of tight at first, but your payment was just the same and your income went over time, upward went over time. So our, uh, financial situation. Should get easier with time.
We'll do like to look at the, uh. Worst case scenario.
For sure.
Though, uh. Any good answers for that?
Well. It, I would suggest, you know, look at what you're buying. Because, uh, one I just heard today. People are concerned about the, uh, the water project. And it's like, you can save. Twelve fifteen million dollars by not doing that project. But if we were to have a medium, uh. A earthquake, then you're really risking whether or not you're gonna have water here in three days for people to drink, not everywhere. But to someplace in the city that you can get a drink, because you can only live for three days without water. And we are not gonna be an easy place to reach. So, cavalry's not coming. So is it worth doing that and is it worth raising, um, water rates to be able to do that? And it's the same thing with the, the buildings, you can wait, but we've waited twenty, thirty years to build, rebuild this building. And the police station, the conditions are not acceptable and, um, previous council had said that if we can't. If we don't decide to go and move forward, we'll do something, um, significant to this building. To address some of the concerns that are about air quality and, and some other things. But it's still a building, it's probably not gonna last through a medium earthquake. And so when everybody wants our help. We're not gonna be at our best.
Well, in particular. Uh. The police station and emergency operations center we're funding.
Yeah.
Uh. You know, in the worst case scenario, uh, is a huge benefit. Uh, I think a critical thing that we're doing here, uh.
Oh, it's this building. What happens after a, like, I use hurricanes, but there's not a lot of difference between that and a. And a earthquake is that it's years to rebuild. And so if you don't have a city hall, then, you know, I, I guess it's possible to go ahead and try to set something up over time. Assuming people can get in here with trailers and all those things, or you can start helping people right away.
I, I, I just haven't heard, I haven't heard that many negative, that much negative feedback about the idea of rebuilding the. The police station and the city hall. That, that's really dissipated as time has gone on. I think that, that really. The, the major complaints I hear about the school, not.
Yeah.
Not, I think people are pretty well aware of the fact that the other two buildings, uh, this is not. They're not sustainable the way they are.
Right.
Or, or healthy, or it's not healthy, is it?
Ten won't be able to talk, we won't be able to hear her tonight. She had two meetings in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm nervous about the amount of money. Um, I'm more nervous when you talk about doing it for forty years. I think thirty years is.
It was just a question.
No, I know, but that, that raised my anxiety a little, um, but then I look at, at, um. Our end product and we need, we need to do this.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't keep putting it up. It's gotta happen.
Mm-hmm.
And. So that makes me less nervous because I, I have that vision, like you referred to many times yesterday in coffee with counselors. Is, um, we're gonna get some great. Things done for the city, things that have been long overdue. And, um, you know, I spent a fair amount of time down at Nekus. And I just look at, we've all become so. We've all become so accustomed to looking at those buildings. And so now every time I drive into Cannon Beach. I see the new buildings in my head and we need to do it.
Yeah, see, it feels like it's an. Opportunity that we need to take advantage of now. So the funding for. Police station and city hall is essentially giving us this ability right now, this window of time. Delaying. Is just going to put it out of our reach. You know, and we probably all had different thoughts about what should happen there. I know Lisa looked, looked at it and said, why are you trying to save these buildings? But we certainly did listen to a lot of people and I wasn't among them who was. That, you know, had that much love for those buildings that I thought we should save them, but that's what the community told us.
That's right. That's why I changed my mind.
So that's why I'm, I'm concerned when we're this far into the process and we have. You know, some people trying to derail what has been years in the making.
Well, I, I, you know, if the derailment was based on facts, it would be one thing. And so far I'm, I'm still waiting. For a letter or a comment that is actually based on reality. And I haven't heard one yet, like for example, oh, we need housing. Well. That has nothing to do with. Nekus and we can't use that money for housing. So. I, I'm still waiting to hear a rational, you know, and I, and I'm, and I'm open to one, but I just haven't. Everything I've heard is not, is ignoring all the information we've been given and that's.
We, we've just, we have heard. And I think we acknowledge that, you know, that we're spending a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
So. You know, yes, a disaster could happen.
And it's scary. Yeah.
But, you know, I, I still look at the opportunity we have and. And just don't feel like it's something we can pass up, you know, folks. To honor the native people of Cannon Beach, which that is a significant historical site. But the opportunity we have to. Do a nature center and really, you know, the opportunity for stewardship that we have through that in our environment. It's just like I. We can keep putting up signs telling people what to do and not to do, but this is something that will have an impact.
Well, I think too, you know, people say it doesn't reflect the village character, but when you think about what the purpose of the building is. It more than encompasses the village character. I mean, what it's going to do, what it's meant to do, the, the, the heritage bill, the lobby with the Klatseb. Tribe, you know, that's part of our village character, the classes that are going to be taught in environment and the culture.
Continuing the whole education.
That's part, yeah, and continuing it as a school in a sense, that's part of the cu- culture of the village. The, the story circle where we get together and, and talk about things and have conversations and stories and entertainment. That will be part of the village character. I mean, that's all, all of what is, it's meant to do. Encompasses the village that we see.
Enhances it really.
And, and honors it.
And honors it. Yes.
And the school itself. I mean, that's where I finally. I gave up my feelings about not.
You went digging.
Not a, a good looking building and the idea of redoing it. You know, I mean, I'm totally on board with that now because people feel like that is part of our village. And so it's undeniable. I mean, I, I don't. Almost I. What are the other choices? Just to rip it to the ground and have a big empty field or?
And that's what some people want, but that's not. What got us to this point. That's what we said, it's sentimental, got us to this point. So, but to me, it's like, how can we acknowledge that these are legitimate concerns that we've sat up here and weigh heavily on us? And. And we're making the best decision we can.
It is a frivolous decision. It's really, I mean, yeah. I think it's, it's scary for all of us. That's because it's a risk and, you know, but we have to weigh. Both sides of it and I don't see.
And look at the other risks we've taken, you know, going ahead and pushing for the nature trail and the Cola Creek Forest Reserve and. You know, making some good things happen for this community, even though there's people who thought, oh, the city was crazy for pursuing some of those things.
And that really affected me too. I had no idea. I didn't realize the people objected to that nature trail.
Oh, gosh, that was huge.
I just amazed. I mean.
Yeah, that was a huge.
Great trail.
Yeah, huge controversy.
Wow.
Barb is right in the middle in that because she was living right there.
Yep. Tell people that don't talk to me because of well, and others that use it every single time they're here. And, and they walked by us a couple of times during our work party on Saturday and I think, hmm. What difference 20 years makes?
I, I have a comment. It's, it's more to do with the financial end of it. And is that okay to?
Sure.
Yeah. Well, it's just something that. I didn't think it was really appropriate to ask of Matt, but I think I can ask it of the council of you, Bruce. They mentioned that the 10 years needed to elapse before we could think of. Paying down the principal. What would you think, I'm just saying this out loud in terms of setting up some type of fund in the. With the idea that after 10 years, we would be able to pay down some of that, if that's even practical, if, or if that's not how it works.
We're going to set aside funds, right? I would ask Matt this, but I would probably pay down principal. Instead of saying, I will pay a bunch here, but in the meantime, you're accumulating this interest. I'd reduce the interest we're accumulating with the funds if we were going to do something like that.
And that certainly lowers the cost of the project.
Total interest cost, yes.
I mean, I don't know if we're in a position to do that. I just wanted to, to bring it up as something for discussion.
Potentially. With the. Anticipated growth of several of those funds, I think it would be possible to make some decisions to pay down some principal. But I think. Without some of the moves that we've made, I don't think we would be able to do that.
Yeah, certainly with the school and. The lodging tax dollars, that's one that. I would expect will be more in that position where the general fund dollars. We have a lot of priorities.
And I completely lifeguards.
Housing, which we're about to move on to and talk about. So. But the school, again, I think is one that's an excellent candidate for.
Oh, I agree. And I hate paying interest. I just hate.
I do too.
To me, it's like lighting money on fire, you know, so I just, anything we can do to pay principal instead of interest, I would be.
Absolutely.
thrilled.
But we all did to live here.
Yeah.
So kind of a risk that we all have taken.
Yeah, in terms of the risk, I, I'm just not of the mind at all to. Put off doing any of these projects because of that risk. I just, it's not something that. That I agree with. I, I don't agree with that.
Certainly the doomsday scenarios, that's just, it doesn't, I agree with you completely.
I don't have much more to add beyond that.
Well, I think like every decision people make, there's lots of things we can't control.
Yeah.
And. So we're doing.
Just do our best.
Right.
And putting them off, to me, may as well forget it then. We're just not going to do it.
Yeah. Okay, we're ready to.
Okay.
Move on to.
Yeah.
Zoning and housing.
Let's take on something easy like zoning and housing now.
Yeah, right.
Okay, do we want to start with zoning?
They're all kind of interrelated in a lot of ways. I mean, zoning, housing, housing size, short term rentals, they all. They're all connected on some level, I think. You know, there's been so many studies. It's interesting. Klatseb County paid a ton of money to do a. A housing study several years ago and one of the.
You think it's a ton of money?
Well, it was a lot of, it was thousands of dollars.
It was a lot of.
Hundreds of dollars.
That, that to me is a lot of money.
Okay.
Okay, to do a housing study. And then it seems like they, this, the, the Klatseb County Council just. Ignored that, one of the main things that they said in the housing study was is that short term rentals, that was one of the conclusions is that short term rentals had a big effect. On the avail- availability of long-term housing.
And that may be true.
In, in the market.
Countywide, I, I think. I'm sure there are some things to talk about with short term rentals, but I think. As far as Cannon Beach is concerned, that, you know, we could outlaw short term rentals and it's not going to make any.
Then I'm not saying outlaw them. I'm saying cap them. That's all.
And that's right. I think we probably, we probably have some consensus here. On.
Yeah, I don't think we can, I don't think, I mean outlawing them once people have already committed to them and have licenses, I. But that seems really draconian, but.
Probably the. Least effective of all the things we can do to encourage housing.
Not necessarily. I mean, if you read the housing study, they, they actually felt like there was a correlation, definitely between the availability. Of long-term housing because so, a lot of people buy properties just to short term them. Not as vacation homes or second homes for themselves, but just for the, and I, and I know this to be true. I know that, that it happens a lot in Airbnb. Even though that was not the initial conception of Airbnb, their initial idea was a shared economy. I know this because my son worked for them for many years and I, you know, I've been down to their offices. I've talked to their founders. I know how that whole thing was conceived. It was a great idea. It's not how it turned out. People buy. Apartments rentals all over the world. And they only buy them for the purpose of putting them on Airbnb, which.
Again, I don't think that's happening here.
I think it is happening here.
The only thing that's happening here is people are. Supplementing the mortgage of their second home.
I, I disagree with you totally on that. I think there.
You can own one.
Several, I know.
They've owned one short term rental in this town. So nobody's really doing it. Just as an investment.
Well, that's not true. I mean, I, I've had.
Yeah.
Contact me, asking me about the short term rental rules around here because they wanted to buy a house and turn it into a short term rental.
Right.
I mean, they do it right away.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I'm not sure we should. Debate too much of that because I think. We probably have consensus here that capping them is a good idea.
But now might be a good time to discuss. How we would cap them because I think we agree it's time to cap.
But I, I just wanted to point out, just because there was that study done. By Klatseb County and that was one of the conclusions in the study. And then most of Klatseb County turned around. And just did unlimited short term rentals, even after paying all that money for the study, which I find very odd.
They had the vote that they.
They had a vote. It was very, and the vote was, I. Believe that that vote was, first of all, the way the language was in the, in the vote was very confusing. A lot of people were not sure what they were voting for. Also, there was a huge lobbying effort.
I know they camped right out there by farmers market.
To, to get, to get that, you know, to, to get it, to get it found illegal to begin with, to get the courts to reverse even the. The possibility of the vote and then to make sure that that vote didn't pass to.
Klatseb County is big and varied. And really what we're talking about there is an unincorporated. Klatseb County, because the rest of us have our regulations for short term rentals.
Like look at Arch Cape, for example, is, is, is not, isn't its own city and they are suffering.
They're, they're unincorporated.
Yeah, they're unincorporated. I said they're not their own city.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. So they're, they're affected by the, these rules that come out of Klatseb County, you know, for unregulated. Short term rentals in different parts. I'm just saying, there's, there's a, there's a whole lot of literature, tons of it. From very reputable sources about the effects of short term rentals on the ability of people to have housing. And, and I think that that, you know, I think if you don't recognize that, then you're just ignoring.
I don't think we're arguing with you about that, really.
So I think that.
Again, I feel like we're probably in consensus. About at least where to go from here.
Capping the short term. Well, and there's a lot of things to think about in capping them. For example. Do you, you know, when someone gets a license for a year, I think the licenses are a year, right? They have to renew them every year. For short term rental. Okay, so do you automatically get your renewal or do you go to the bottom of the list? And the next person in line in the waiting line gets to, to rent their place short term? How do you, how do you figure out how to do it?
There are some process things.
Yeah, that are really confusing and need some thinking.
I'm trying to think of why not to cap them. And Brandon has made one of the arguments, well, they haven't been going up, but. That seems like just.
Again, we can't predict the future.
And I think. When I bought my house, my duplex, it was with a short term rental license that was grandfathered in. And I think at that point there were 98 vacation rentals in Cannon Beach. Well, now there's over 200. It's been a few years, but now there's. But because they've stayed steady for the last 10 years, I'm not sure there's an argument for or against capping them. Necessarily. The only arguments I've heard. Against capping them, other than people who want to. Buy a home and offset some of the cost of their mortgage. Is. If a home is on the rental market and it sells. When there are advanced bookings, then we're in a weird situation where possibly a management company. Has to turn around and tell people, oh, sorry, that place you booked six months ago.
Well, they should have saw that when they sold the house. I'm sorry.
Actually have that problem now.
Yeah.
It comes up several times where the new owner calls and says, hey, I bought this house. There's some bookings. We want to do this. And we just tell them what the process is and.
So I don't know. I, I haven't wrapped my head around that. Is it something we should try to, to solve or it's not a reason for not capping them, but. Is there something we can do to, I mean, it doesn't feel like something we necessarily want to do to our visitors.
What do you, what is the process?
The same process as anyone applying on a regular day. However, when people are very motivated to get, not motivated to get it done, they usually get their paperwork in right away because they want to get approved to get that booking. So they get all their paperwork turned in and we treat it the same way as we would any other. Permit that applied.
But what happens if they don't want a short term rental?
Then the, they have to cancel it. And usually a property management has to deal with that. But when you have a property management, you're usually telling them that we're selling. And so it's new one pretty well advanced. And so they can kind of plan accordingly. We had a person call us once and said, you know, I'm selling. I'm in negotiations with the new owner. When can they apply? And I said, they actually can't apply until the property is in their name. Because that's one of the reasons we have to confirm. So they, when they closed, they actually got a document from the county and wrote it down. Because it takes a while for their website to be updated to prove that they really own this. So we can get the process going. But it was all on them to do. Because they didn't want to have to cancel those bookings.
And if you have a, and I have to say, one thing that there was one thing that came out of those. Four years of sitting on that short term rental committee was that the houses that are under those property management companies. Do a lot better than those that aren't. I mean, it, those property management companies do an excellent job. And that could be part of, if they know a house is going on the market, they can tell the people before they book it. Well, we, we have word that this house is going on the market. So you, you might get canceled just to let them know and they would do that. I, I think. I don't see why we don't make it incumbent on short term rentals to use those property management companies. I, right now they don't have to use it. They have to have people in the local, but it never seems to work out that well. You know, sometimes they're gone, the local residents are not around, are not available and neither is their backup. Or, you know, it, it's a, a neighbor or a friend and it's very. Or, you know, it, it's a, a neighbor or a friend and it's very, becomes super awkward. Whereas if you're dealing with a management company, it's not awkward because they're a business, since you can call them and say, hey, look, I don't, you know, this isn't working out for me as a neighbor. I don't know, I just think that we, we actually talked about that possibility of making it incumbent on any short-term rental owner to be signed up with that property management.
It was discussed.
Yeah, and I don't think
I think that's a topic we, we should continue talking about.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I wa- I wasn't quite finished with uh, talking about caps. The only other argument I've heard against it, and you probably saw something uh, was from current homeowners who may find through their own circumstances that uh, uh, they need to make some short-term income from their property to save it for one circumstance or another. Uh, but I'm trying to think of, okay, well, that's just as a case for not capping them. Where, I believe they probably commented was a case for capping them higher than where they are now.
Yeah.
But then you get to that point and you're in the same boat, so I'm not sure that
And there was
They wouldn't have to make it a lot higher.
Yeah, but, but, but even if you made it a cap that was higher, that wouldn't necessarily it, a help with the circumstance that you're talking about, if they, some of, if that cap had already been reached.
Yeah, and you're still back in that same boat, right?
Yeah, so that didn't make any sense to me, I'm, I'm
Yeah.
And, and to answer your question then, would, there would of course just be a waiting list?
Right, yeah.
Would there what?
Be a waiting
Oh, yeah.
Or it could be like we did with the five-year uh, uh, they put it into a pool and, and, you know, lottery kind of situation too.
I think, I think a waiting list is more fair to me, even though that takes staff time.
Yeah, but honestly, I don't, I don't really think this is a housing topic. Uh, it's a topic that should be addressed, or I do think it does relate, is I would personally like, I guess I would like to stop the uh, purchase of homes with the thought that I'm going to supplement my mortgage by short-term renting it. By, you know, the answer being, can I short-term rent my house? No, because all, we've, we're at our cap of short-term rentals.
It's like the letter we got today, um, I think we, today or yesterday from, uh, I think it was from Andrew who said that he talked to some real estate agents, and so that's the first question they get asked.
Yeah, well, and the other question, or the other problem they have, is trying to explain our short-term rental rules, because it's hard to understand.
I don't think it's that hard to understand, but uh, that's, you know, I don't think
We have three different kinds of licenses and it's kind of
One is facing out and, and one is a, is a, you know, grandfathered in and it's really one left.
But I guess I look at the impact of, okay, if we, and if we do cap them, that means that people who are coming to look for their second home uh, can't have that uh, subsidy if we're going to look at it that way, that
They can get on the waiting list. And then when, when there's a
Right.
When they, when it's available, they can, it, I think it has to do with quality of life for people who are here.
I think it's a bigger issue for quality of life than it is for housing.
Well, I think it's both, and I, because Chet mentioned it as well, when he gave his speech, he, he said, he talked about giving people incentives, you know, different kinds of incentives, you know, for, for a long-term rent. I, I think there is a connection, it's not a huge connection, but I think there is some connection because people do buy homes here just to short-term rent them. And it, I, I can think of one homeowner I know in town who has two homes, one just to short-term rent and one to live in. And it's just, you know, it's, it, it's not, I, at least one, actually two, so uh, that I know, and I don't know hun- hundreds of people, so that's, you know, i- it happens. Even in my small circle of acquaintances, so
They're offsetting our real estate investment, I, I understand that.
I, I understand it, but I think they're doing it to the detriment of this community, and I certainly don't appreciate it. I, I think that they're, they're less lowering the quality of life for the people in this community who live here and are residents here by just purchasing real estate to short-term rent it, putting a, basically a hotel in next door to somebody.
I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the other side of the coin now, and it's not that, it, it's necessarily my opinion or a, a huge concern, but uh, we take away the possibility to short-term rent.
Taking away a possibility, we're capping it and making
Yes.
A waiting list.
Immediately.
Totally different.
Uh, so what kind of home buyer are we going to get there? The uh, rich second home buyer. Uh, and so we're, that's the direction we would be pushing thing, is not someone who's like, okay, I can afford my dream home if I can make a little bit of extra income from it, my retirement home. And we're pushing it into a category of uh, only someone with a big enough pile of money that they can pay a second mortgage.
Or somebody who wants to live here, Gary.
And that's
Somebody who wants to live here full-time. You know, that, that person would buy here too, and maybe aren't fabulously rich, so they buy a small home here, or a cottage when it comes on the market, and instead of ripping it down and building a behemoth in its place, they live in the smaller home. I mean, you know, you, you can't, I don't think you can generalize like that. I think you get all kinds of people here, and I think that um, when it happens, it's happening anyway. People are just buying, the people, a lot of people are buying property here and they're building huge houses and taking down what was there before and putting up giant houses. And that's happening particularly along the oceanfront, where land is so expensive.
Since we're on short-term rentals, uh, where do we want to leave this conversation or uh, or provide some direction on what we want to do, because really, I think that there's a consensus of us here that are pretty much in agreement on some initial steps at least.
Putting a cap.
Yeah.
And I think we
With a, with a waiting list.
Cap of two hundred makes sense to me, and if we have two hundred and five right now, that, that's an exception for that cap. But eventually doing two, two hundred or two oh five.
And letting them work down to two hundred.
Right, and then
Go ahead.
There's a good chance you're going to get an influx of permit applications
Yes.
As soon as this comes out, because when you do an ordinance, it takes thirty days to
Yeah, I'm sure that's going to happen, I know.
And we're at two oh five right now.
Yeah.
But don't you have to have a um, you have to have the home built before you can apply for a
We have had people try to, uh, there was a woman who turned in her building permit and asked if she could apply, and we said, no, not until your
Yeah.
You have to have a health inspection too, I mean, you have to go through quite a few steps before you get a permit.
Yeah, side note on her, she ended up selling a few years later because it didn't turn out to be as profitable as she saw, she thought, but that was, was an interesting one because she was so antsy to get that permit. But, um, yeah, we made her wait until she built it and then she, we let her apply.
So that'll cut down some of the rush to, rush to apply.
I think there's, there's just, I've heard people say, you know, if the city ever puts a or like it cancels it or stops it, you know, we're going to apply, just people I know that have said that.
But if we capped it at two hundred and five and we get a bunch of applications, then they're going to put on a waiting list.
Yeah.
Right, well, and it, it will take a lot longer to work down to the two oh five.
It will.
Except they would already, if, if they do it in the thirty-day waiting period.
Well, if we, if we have two hundred and five now and put a cap on at two hundred and five, then we'd have just started our waiting list.
Well, no.
The ordinance doesn't go into effect.
Well, but that means, that means that somebody would have to drop out of the two hundred and five between now and thirty days from now, or whenever the
No, what she's saying is, as soon as you, we pass that and it's thirty days from going into effect, then we're going to get a whole bunch in thirty
Day window, we can't
They don't go on a waiting list, they get a license.
Yeah, they get a license.
Because it goes
Well, that's true, because, because it would have to be
Right.
Is it, what's the time length of, from the time somebody wants to do one in terms of all the inspections and things, how long does it?
Um, it usually takes a couple of weeks, just because it's the staff time, but if they've applied in that date, they're gonna, they're, they're in, they, they've applied by that date, but you can end up, let's say you get two hundred and fifty, you're going to have to have more than fifty people before you can even add a new person on.
Yeah.
So you could be a couple of years down the road
Yeah.
Before you get any new ones.
Yeah.
That rule with the cap, I mean.
Yeah.
And then we would just keep a list, and when we did the lottery, we had a list anyways. The only difference is we used to tell Ryan Mar how many was on the list, and he would go to a website and say, pull a lottery number between one and, you know.
I, I think it's also another case for uh, making sure we have some kind of inactivity clause or minimum activity clause uh, for short-term rentals.
Oh, see, and that's not the case now, you can have people that do not rent, but they have to pay their fees and they still have to file root texts. That just says that they had no rentals for that year.
And how many of those do we have?
I don't think there's a lot.
Okay.
There's a couple of people that they, they don't want to go through the process again, and I think there was at some point in time, I think it was more during COVID. There was a couple of people who, uh, you didn't want to lose their transient life, because they know if they go out of it, you'll never get that again.
You know, the other thing we need to look seriously at are the penalties. We have such a, I think frankly, lax penalty situation. You know, if you do something that you're not supposed to be doing, then you get a warning. And then that's within the year or two, then if you get a second, if you violate it a second time, then maybe something will happen. I mean, it's a very lax situation, we really need to tighten up those penalties, which would probably increase our, I mean, decrease our waiting time for, on the waiting list. But we, I mean, I, I think you have to go through three years of stuff before you actually get a potential revocation of your permit.
Yeah, I agree.
Long drawn out process.
I think that penalty, revocation penalty should be much stricter. In other words, if you keep, if you screw up once, okay, that's a mistake. It's like drunk driving.
Yeah.
Drive drunk once, mistake, you're young or whatever, you just didn't understand, or you, you screwed it up. But two times, your second one, come on now.
Yeah, it's
You know, I mean, you should know
Brags on for
And I, and I see it, sort of see, see the same thing with this, you know, if you just, if you make a mistake one time, well.
Seemed like our license was also uh, certainly not at the top end of the range.
We just, um
We did drop it, uh, didn't we?
Yeah.
The fee's six fifty or something.
Yeah, remember, it was, it went up a lot compared to what it was.
Yeah.
With what's surrounding
Yeah, I just remember somebody else being like at least a couple hundred dollars more.
Yeah, it, we went up, was it about three years ago or so, we went up to, what, five hundred dollars?
Five hundred, just
And now I think other places have gone up, like you say, a couple hundred dollars more.
That's also some incentive not, for people not to frivolous, frivolously file.
Apply just to have it in, in, in advance. Yeah, I agree, that's a good idea.
Still only represents one night of, in some places, one night of, of ramble.
Right. And then the problem with the legal ones is still hard, it's really hard, because uh, one acquaintance of mine has, you know, filed so many complaints, it's just hard to prove that you're not letting your, how do you prove that you're not letting your best friend use your house? Or, you, all you have to do is say that, oh, it's my, you know, so it becomes very difficult.
It was a prize in an auction.
Hmm.
It was a prize in an auction, I've heard that one, right?
Yeah, it's, there's all kinds of, but I, I think our, our enforcement officer is doing a terrific job. I really like that. And I think he's
Hmm? It's currently five hundred.
The licenses.
License box.
Yeah, it's a, they have to pay that every
Well, I don't know, I think we've got several things here that when we have time to address a single topic, uh, that there are some things that we could agree on and move forward on.
Okay, so cap, um, strengthening the uh, penalties or
And maybe raising the license fee again.
Fees and
I would say inactivity in our clause.
Yeah, I think that, that's really something I'll get, and I don't
Unrelated is the uh, uh, not allowing uh, an ADU primary residence to be
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's a great, that's a, that's something we really, that's a loophole.
Yeah.
That is really a problem.
That's, that's more of a code audit
Right.
Issue to resolve, but
And I think another code audit issue may be something to discuss is what zones we want, we will allow short-term rentals in versus what zones they aren't.
Yeah, well, let's talk about zoning.
Um, that could be kind of tricky because we have some, we have short-term rentals spread all over
Everywhere.
Community now, so I don't know how we can limit it, the ones that we've got now, but in the future, we may want to. And I'm not sure how legally, how, how legal that is, so that would be another question.
Other communities do it.
Yeah.
So it's got to be
So the seaside does it, yeah.
Yeah.
They have
I'd say rather than excluding areas, zones, not allowing them to be too dense in any
They have percentage caps
Yeah.
In different zones, in seaside.
That could work too.
Which real, you know, only, th- this neighbor can only have this percentage of short-term rentals. And that, I don't, I don't know how successful it is.
And I don't know how that would work with a waiting list either, being in a waiting list, because if you're on a waiting list and you're in the wrong zone.
Well, they just drop
Only the next year.
Yeah. Yeah.
But
But that would, that's going to be discussed in the code audit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's going to be such a tough discussion because there's so much already built up here. It's not like, you know what I mean, you can't rip down all, you know, and start again.
Our town is full of non-compliant buildings.
Right.
And you would know.
Sony, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm applying commission for
But what can you do about it? You can't, you can't, in other words, if they're there.
Then you have to, you have to acknowledge their existence and you have to write the code in a way that allows for conforming use if that use disappears and allows for um, future construction. But you have to, to, you know, figure out a way to live with what's existing.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, but I, I think right now, our code, for example, if you decide you want to remodel your house, um, or let's say your house, uh, you want to remodel it, you can, and it's out of con- out of conformance. You can, you can remodel it out of conformance up to a certain percentage of the value of the property.
It's fifty percent of the assessed value.
Right.
But if you go above that, you have to
Then you have to bring it into conformance, and fifty percent is um, I, I, you know, we might think, we might want to look at that and, and wonder that if you want to remodel your house, it's out of conformance, maybe fifty percent is too big of an allowance, maybe
Fifty percent would, I believe would only apply to the cost of the structure. That's my understanding.
Oh, it's only to the cost of
And I
Oh, see, maybe
Thing issue.
Yeah, it is. And so I, I think that
Sure.
I think that, that we might want to look at that when we do the code audit, because
You think it's too low?
Well, I've just seen, I've seen it abused, is what I'm saying, not here, actually, I've seen it abused in Arch Cape, where they had a similar rule, but it was a different percentage. But it, it, it's very difficult to pr- to prove your cost of remodeling and whether or not you really are over the, whatever the percentage is.
That's actually not that difficult.
I was going to say, it's all dollars and cents.
Well, they have tables that they use, you know, they have to have some sort of minimum value. And they use that now uh, for the permitting process as well. Say somebody wants to build something and they bring in a real low-ball number because it lowers the permit cost. We have the ability to look at it, you know, an actuarial table, it's, you know, instructive call this. So you're going to have to meet this minimum number.
Interesting, because in the, in the case I was involved in, they didn't have any tables or anything. They just had testimony from the people who were building, who happened to be architects, and nothing on the other side.
It's very common for cities to use these, because they have to have something to go against
To prove
Don't want to follow the rules.
And how is whatever change we're talking about uh, a solution to housing?
Not sure how this is going to get there, but it does have to do with zoning. And it does have to do with the overall discussion we're currently having.
Can I add something to? On a review, that's part of our checklist items in our review process. We have a line that says assessed value, and then they, they look at the building side and things, they look at the contractor's cost. And I think the way the rule is written that you can use the contractor's And I think the way the rule is written that you can use the contractor's estimate or the state valuation table, whichever one is higher.
Oh, that's great.
It's a very common thing to look at and to question if it's low. And so it gets questioned. And on our review checklist, we do it mostly through a cell, but we have some paper ones that we still use. And there's a spot where they actually go to the county website and look up the assessed value and write it in.
That's great.
So it is something that our community development and public works look at.
That's great, because in the, in the, in our, the Arch Cape case, that wasn't the case. And so it was just
And it's the assessed value of the building, not the land.
I don't remember for sure. I just remember modifying a form and I know that they look at that because it is things that have come up before where, you know, the value wasn't enough, where they had to bring it up to a FEMA code. Like they were in a flood plain and they had to adjust things. So I remember it happening before, but I don't remember specifically what the, but I know it's something that they, we go up through the county and take that number.
So if we wanted to try and bring more houses into, into compliance or, or increase the number of houses into compliance, how would we, how would you go about that?
Well, I don't have an answer for that, but what I was also going to say is that what we've already been doing is, you know, there's the variance route as well.
Yeah.
And depending on how sympathetic the, the planning commission is to certain types of renovation, that's one way to at least in theory, improve the housing stock. I don't know if to Gary's point, that does anything for rentals. And maybe possibly to the point you've been making, it allows people to build a bigger house than necessarily the community feels would be in keeping with the village character.
Yeah.
Yeah, I asked for zoning to be part of a conversation on housing, thinking what we're talking about is how to solve some of our housing issues, especially middle housing issues. Uh, but I'm thinking of zoning as there are some tools there for us to use.
To, to increase opportunities.
Yes.
To increase density is what you're talking about.
I mean, it's true. We're going to need to address both of the issues, at least as part of the code audit.
As part of the code audit, I think so. I, I just thought that what we were talking about here was how to solve some of our housing issues. Was that
No, it was, that's part of it. It's zoning, housing, housing size and short-term rentals, all three of those.
And I, again, I asked for zoning to be on here because I thought it was part of a, how do we solve some of our housing issues?
Absolutely interested in talking about that.
Sure.
Okay.
It's a much bigger conversation, probably just, I mean, the direction you're going with, with some of it, but
What do you see as a change in zoning that you would think would help solve the middle housing issues?
Uh, I, it's probably related to the next two things. Uh, but uh I think I've mentioned, you know, when you look at our zoning map now and we've got a lot of our R two and R three in wetlands area and we're starting to limit that now. Or soon we, we will be limiting it.
And rightly so.
Uh, so we need more R two and R three is, in my opinion. Personally, I don't know that we should even have an R one or an R V L. Uh, I, I think we need to be uh making possible multifamily housing everywhere. And I think we ought to be incentivizing uh multifamily housing.
We, what do you mean by multifamily housing? Do you mean duplexes, triplexes, quad, fourplexes?
Yeah, I probably wouldn't go beyond that myself. I mean, maybe there are some opportunities and some incentivizing, but yes, I'm thinking, I'm thinking ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, maybe quads.
And that's what would, you know, realistically fit in a residential plot.
Yeah.
Anything bigger is just not
Yeah.
Maybe in some of the R V L, you could have an opportunity to do that. But one thing that I'd want to do in order to, to give any sort of density bonus is that those multifamily housing units would need to be tied to long-term rental.
Oh, most definitely.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And, and you can do that?
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, I would
Skylark is a good example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except that
Silver.
There's, it's starting to erode a little bit from what I understand, but yeah.
Yeah, we'd need to, to look at, um, you know, sunsets, things like that. Because ten years may seem a lot time when you're, you know, starting out, but it goes by far too fast.
I would, I would like to have that discussion and consider some of the different angles on that, but my duplex, uh, I've had the short-term rental license. I didn't like that. Uh, you know, having a short-term rental right next to my place, I've used it as a mother-in-law or my mother, uh, and I've used it as long-term rental. So uh but I, I'm interested in having that conversation of how you would limit it. And I'm assuming we're talking about new construction, especially if there was some kind of giveback that we're talking about.
My big problem with it is, is it doesn't, I, I just so far have not seen it as realistic. Only because of the cost of land in Cannon Beach and, and I, I don't see how, I mean, I'm not so sure it, with the cost, like with the cost of land, is it worth on a, on a fifty by a hundred lot, which is most, most of the lots in Cannon Beach. So on a five thousand square foot lot, it, are, are the people who buy these lots, you're going to want to put in a duplex? Or are they gonna, you know, I mean,
My only response would be if you've been to Bend and seen what Bend is doing with uh ADUs, and I'm not really sure about multifamily housing. But uh Bend is right up there with us in their property values. So you could say a lot of the same thing, that all people with a lot of money, they're just, they don't want to share their property. But it's actually making it, remember that subsidizing your mortgage payment? Now you're subsidizing your mortgage payment with a long-term rental. Uh, so you're providing some uh income. You're making it possible that people who it might be a push for to buy a property now have that secondary income that we aren't just becoming, you know, playground of the rich and famous.
Well, Portland's doing it too. I mean,
Yeah.
They aren't even allowing single-family homes
No.
anymore. So it's kind of coming along everywhere.
Yeah, Bend has a uh accelerated process for ADUs. If you choose uh A, B, C, or D, pre-approved and you're, you know,
Yeah, just love to change that rule about the ADUs, not allowing
Yeah, right.
In the, in the main house.
Jan, you want to make a quick comment?
I just wanted to say, I'm warming again, that I would like to add trees to the conversation. Thank you.
Tree houses?
Trees. Destination.
No, I
No, I'm
I think we all understand that and we all have to like somehow balance environment and housing and
Yeah.
Uh, it's, and they're, they're in conflict with each other, honestly.
It's true.
Yeah.
If you're going
But we're not going to forget about the trees. Thank you.
Absolutely not.
Density. It, it makes it more difficult.
Oh, yeah.
There's, we, you know, we're gonna upset people on
Everything.
Every topic we're talking about here.
Yeah, that's true. And I guess you have to decide at some point, what are your most, what are your strongest values as a community?
And I think housing has got to be up on the top.
Well, I think preserving our natural resources has to be on the top, but you know, freezing wetlands.
In balance.
So, and I, and I see that just as important as, as increasing housing opportunities.
Do you think they can both concord with us?
I think with a lot of creativity, they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's possible.
Let's get creative.
You know, I think, you know, that there's so many, I mean, when you get to the, I, I remember when I was a long time ago, when I mentioned something about housing size, uh limiting housing size.
Year two thousand.
I remember that.
You got us all fired up.
And then, and then I got some um blowback that was, I mean, yes.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Those days?
Yeah. Oh, really angry and
Just using an example.
And, and I actually don't care because I'm not gonna bring it up again. Because I think the whole conversation is all part and parcel of the same thing. It's part and parcel of values of our community and what we want our community to be. And so I was very interested because I've never cared a rip about Carmel, California. Because to me, it was always just like Richie Rich, oh boy, you know, what's his name was the mayor, uh Eastwood? I don't like him. So who cares about Carmel was my basic thought. Then I started reading about Carmel and I saw some pictures of Carmel and I started thinking about, wow, what a beautiful community and, and some of the rules they've put in for that community. And there's just, it, it, what is, will do nobody any good to deny that people with a lot of money are moving in here and building, you know, their big huge um homes and, and, you know, it's happening all over the place. There's one going in right now on, on Laurel that is gigantic, you know? And so um I started looking at their, their, what their, they call it, they call it a base floor area. But it's the same thing as our F A R, our, our floor area ratio. They're one in the same thing. And theirs is a lot smaller than ours. The amount of floor area ratio you are allowed to put on a lot, there's a, a chart pretty interesting. And for a five thousand square foot lot, their F A R is two thousand one hundred and fifty feet. Whereas ours is three thousand feet. That's a lot, a lot bigger that we permit. Then there's some allowable site coverage, which we have on ours too. Um, and we have a lot of holes, gaps in our code that I think are really important in the code audit. Um, and what was really interesting for me was I went and looked at the drawings for the house on Laurel. Because if you look at it, there's all these beautiful old houses on that. It's one of the prettiest little stretches of um housing is, is in Cannon Beach, back behind the Coaster Theater, that stretch of Laurel with those old cool houses. And so, some of them are large, like the one at the very, very north end of Laurel.
Canary.
Yeah, the old Goodman House.
Beautiful house.
Yeah. And then some of them are smaller, but then there was one that was taken down, a really beautiful old house. And there's one going up now that has been this, a contro, a lot of controversy. It was, we had a lawsuit and they were in the oceanfront setback, so they had to take down the big girders and move it back. But you look at it and you think, wow, how did they end up? Um,
Have those
How did they end up covering so much lot area? And I asked to have that um uh drawing board brought in just because I wanted to draw for you. It was so fascinating to see how they did it, how they designed it. It, it's, and I don't even have to do that because we're such a small group. But if you can, this is it. This is what they did right there. And all of those interior spaces that have lines in them are interior decks. Thought pass it.
Interior deck?
Interior decks. And the solid part is house.
House, yeah.
So by putting in all of those interior decks, uh, uh, a, a little more than half of that does not count towards their lot coverage.
It is, it's, what is it considered in landscape, landscaping? Is that what they're
It's under thirty inches tall. So they put the decks in under thirty inches. Now twenty-five percent of the, of the allowable, uh fifty percent lot coverage does count. Or duh, twenty-five does not count for it and the rest of it does towards lot coverage. It's a, it's a calculation that you do. But it's amazing how they, they did it right down to the dime. I mean, they are not, they are legally under the sixty percent um uh floor area ratio. And they are just under the lot coverage because the decks are all under thirty inches.
Who's the architect on that?
I think it was, uh, what's his name? Sorelli.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Vita Sorelli.
Wow.
I guess, you know,
Yeah.
The house isn't my dream house, but
It's huge though.
Kind of look at it and think that it's ingenious and very reasonable.
It's ingenious, but it covers
Very, very livable with those uh
For them.
Great idea.
Interior decks protected from the elements.
Well, they're not protected. They're open. They have to be open.
That's what I mean. But they're protected from wind and
But it's interesting, but for the neighbors or for the people in the community, for all the people who live on that street hate it. Because it takes up
Yeah.
So much of the, you know, you, you can't even see the ocean between their house and the house next door. There's no landscaping at all.
Yeah.
Because there's no room for landscaping. It's all house.
Yeah.
And so I, I, it is ingenious, but I think it's a, I think it's a gap in our code that we've got to figure out how to, how to close. And I think one of the ways of doing it is by decreasing, decreasing the floor air, the, either the floor area ratio permitted on a lot or by decreasing the lot coverage.
I think the lot coverage in this case is the lot coverage and, and the whole definition of landscaping and hardscaping.
Right.
That hardscaping, I've, I've always been confused about that, but, but I think that whole description um of what is allowed as hardscape versus landscape and what you can have covered isn't, doesn't count toward what you don't, what you don't have covered and all of that.
Right, we have just
Got to really clean that up.
On it. And I think that it, it, it is not that difficult to fix.
Yeah.
I think we have a serious flaw in our agenda here because, you know, I thought we were talking about how to solve some of our housing problems. Uh, and I'm, maybe you think one of our housing problems is we have too big of houses and that may be true in some cases, but it seems like we're talking about what can we do to solve our housing problems? What can we do to, I hate the term village character, but what can we do to preserve our village character? They're kind of two separate conversations. They do have to meet somewhere on the other and be a balance. But
Well, Gary
I'm disappointed that we're not talking about housing.
Okay, well, I put housing size on this agenda. You take it over now and talk about your house and go ahead. I mean, I wanted to
No, I want to talk about, I don't mind talking about either of them, but it just seems
How much more time do we have here?
We're talking about, I thought, I thought we were talking about how
Need a break.
Uh
You guys are talking about all of it.
But
Okay, but i- if we have a break before we go, I want to know what you guys most want to discuss next.
Yeah, I, I'd rather, I'd rather just be clear. Are we talking about what kind of impact can we have that creates housing in this community? That actually creates a community? And how much do we want to talk about? We don't like rich people with big houses. Uh, I just
I'm talking about, Gary. I'm not talking about, we don't like rich people with big houses. I'm talking about trying to preserve the quality of the community, including
I'm sorry.
Environmental issues and including the, just the whole nature and quality of the community and the village care.
Should have put that a better way.
Well, sorry.
Well, if you have too big
But yes, I think they're, but I think they're two separate issues. Whether you want to call it village care.
About both of them, can't we?
It would be good if we were actually focusing on
Yeah. If you have too big a house on a lot, then you can't get to, you can't get a duplex on the lot. So they
Gonna get an A basic on that one house.
Delve into each
And that's where I think we will actually come together. Uh, because I, I wouldn't mind looking at reducing uh home size for single-family homes potentially. But we have to be incentivizing housing and density. Uh, and if we have to do that by greater lot coverage, then I think that's a sacrifice we need to be looking at and considering and discussing.
Well, everything's considerable. I, I would totally be against that, but, you know. And I think some of the ideas that were brought up by Chat are things we ought to look at. Uh, for example, the idea of um doing a pilot project with the middle, middle housing uh duplex, starting with one in the RV park and see how it works out. I think that's a great idea to see how that would work out. Um, and see if that is something that actually is viable in this community. He, he talked about how if you really want to do middle housing in a community like this. He he talked about how if you really want to do middle housing in a community like this. You almost, he believes it seemed to me that you have to do it on either a community trust land or on um city owned land.
Well, he's coming at it from a total different angle. He's coming at it from some kind of subsidy, either free land or some kind of tax benefit to uh create some kind of guaranteed controlled uh housing that we have some kind of control over and my intention on talking about zoning and housing was incentivizing multifamily housing. So I don't, I I think we need to do both.
I agree.
So when we come back from the break, we're going to start out with instant scene. Awesome.
There you go.
Okay.
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 Let's take a break.
That's a great. Okay, we're back in session and our topic is going to be Gary's suggestion of how do we create incentives for middle housing. Would you like to start, Gary?
Well, I think that's a said a lot of it, but I'll try to bullet point it. I think we need to look at our zoning and add multifamily zoning everywhere we can. I think we need to look at incentivizing multifamily housing. Whatever that looks like. I I think the only way to incentivize it really is to give uh it part of it may be to limit home size uh for single family homes, but then have reasonable give backs for ADUs duplexes, maybe triplexes. Again, there are not many places you can fit a quad or more. So those are some basics of what we can do with zoning and code to at least incentivize it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay, so let's say you have a five thousand square foot lot, which is a typical sized lot. And you're only allowed um fifty percent lot coverage. So that is that means uh and then taking away the percentage you get for um like surfaces or decks. I'm just, let's take that out of the picture, just how how's it house? Okay, so you you can build uh you can have a footprint of twenty-five hundred square feet on a fifty, on a five thousand square foot lot. So how how tell me the numbers. How do you do a tr- a quad on that, for example?
Oh, I just said that quads.
Okay, a tri- so try it. How do you get it?
I would.
How would you get a tri?
ADUs and duplexes probably are going to be much more likely and I don't, I don't have uh specific answers or proposals for you. I'm thinking concept wise. Uh, so you know, we, I think we can hash out the numbers, but I don't, I'm not sitting here with a presentation uh on how much we should allow for a single family and then what the incentives, but there's probably I mean, uh lot coverage setbacks, F A R.
An increasing F A R, increasing F A R amount of of lot coverage you're allowed on the on a lot. Increasing the amount of floor area ratio you're allowed on a lot and reducing setbacks on a lot.
Those would be the different options that we could consider for uh as incentivizing uh multifamily.
I don't think you can reduce the setbacks very much at all, especially on the sides, because it's like five feet.
Yeah.
But um I think you could reduce the landscaping, landscaping portion of that because it's quite a bit for the lot that's a lot and that's allowed for a lot or required for a lot. So that's probably where you could could get some space. Or another building.
ADUs right now are six hundred square feet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Six or six fifty.
Okay, well, if you do those things, uh if you if you increase floor area ratio and run and increase coverage. Number one, there's no doubt that you're reducing the village character. You're you're impacting the village character of a neighborhood. There's just no way around that. Because you're reducing landscaping, you're going to, there's no way you can get around the tree issue because you would have to cut down a a lot more trees if you increased the the lot coverage.
Not even say village character, but I agree with you. It's going to be less landscaping, potentially trees. I mean, that's that's potentially the trade off we're looking at to solve housing.
I don't.
I always come back to that. How many buildable lots do we have left in this town? That are vacant.
Not that many.
Not that many.
And and now I keep wondering how much, uh I I guess the only place we have a very low density is east of the highway, I would suspect, is that's probably the only place we have it or R one, maybe a little R one here on the side behind. I don't know where. And so I don't know where we would even have.
But that's part of the zoning conversation. That's why it seems like we're backwards with we got all all of our multifamily zoning in wetlands uh and some treat areas. And then probably some sloped areas. And then we've got east of the highway that's R one and R V L where we could actually add some density. So that that's where zoning uh becomes an issue here.
Well, we'd also also change our um our comp plan because the scenic highway is part of our comp plan. That's it written right into our comp plan. That is a scenic highway for um from the north end of Cannon Beach to the south end of Cannon Beach.
As a wide category for a wide variety of people. So I mean.
Exactly.
Well.
Here we're back to a balance, so.
Right. So I guess it just depends on what you're willing to give up and whether you think that why not try some of the suggestions that Chad had first?
I I think we need to try. I think we need to do everything, so. And you I was going to say in my bullet points that that would be the other thing I would want to try is some projects. But I mean, he's basically talking about a a trial project that what might be four homes.
But we have to start somewhere.
Yes.
And that's exactly it. And even the zoning uh incentivizing multifamily is years down the line to do anything, but we can't, we can't just throw up our arms and say there's nothing we can do.
Well, I still like the idea of trying to something to do with the uh second homes. Since we have such a huge number of second homes here, if we could do some kind of incentivizing for long term rental second homes. Um, I don't know how practical it is to say, let somebody live in your home for nine months. Um, because then that person has to figure out what to do for the other three months.
That's something that's always happened.
Yeah.
But I think we should try that too.
Well, I think that's one of those places to start.
I think that's.
Because the house is already built, right?
Yeah.
The house is already built. It's already on land.
Well, one way to incentivize it is to have a vacancy tax, like a lot of other, I mean, I know it's in the courts now. So that's also down the line. We have to see how that plays out. I think he said California, they're trying to do that in Portland, but.
What do you think that solves?
I think that rather than pay the vacancy tax, it'll look more mu- much more desirable to rent out a home as a long term rental for nine.
And how much the taxes. I mean, if it's if the tax is only a couple of hundred dollars.
My question, I it's, it sounds to me like the.
Really high in British Columbia. It's not.
Only real benefit of that is they're paying the tax and it's going into some kind of affordable housing fund.
Right.
Uh, that's, that would be the benefit, I think, to that. I don't think you're gonna convert people uh to full time rentals, although some people maybe to a nine month rental. I just don't know how viable.
I think it's been happening elsewhere.
Use their house. Most people want to use their second.
Well, I don't know. I mean, there's several second homes I'm thinking of right now. Incredibly big, beautiful homes right on the oceanfront that I have never seen a human being in, never. Huh?
You never will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's the fifth or sixth one that they own.
Completely different sense of homeownership than anything we can understand.
Yeah.
They may own five, ten homes.
Yeah. All over the world.
No need to use it whatsoever.
Yeah, and they're taking up two lots essentially.
Yeah. I don't think we can do anything to incentivize that to be turned into a rental. We can capture some tax money from it if that was.
As a vac- vacancy tax.
It turns out to be legal.
Question, what would you do with that tax money?
Yeah.
The vacancy tax, go into a a uh housing.
Which right now we have maybe.
How would we use that money? That's the thing. We have, we have a fund that for affordable housing.
It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, but but if we don't have the the land and if if developers are not interested in even using a portion of that money or all of the money to to um uh provide affordable housing because it it isn't a good incentive for them. We're sitting here with a pool of money and that nobody is taking advantage of.
B park. That's a great, that's a, that is.
With that, I have a little problem with that.
Why?
Just even the trial?
Yeah, I, it's such a gorgeous piece of property and I just hate seeing it starting to just eat be eaten away and eaten away and then pretty soon it disappears and we have.
Gorgeous piece of property with campers on it. Why, I mean.
But we we do get revenue from those campers.
I know.
I think revenue is something not to be ignored.
That revenue is gonna go toward paying for the pro- three free city projects.
Well, I I I mean, I I guess I cannot understand why somebody would rather have a camper as a neighbor in a big RV rather than a teacher living in a house that they really care about and own and have some pride in. I I don't get that. I don't understand.
I would say RV transient RV sp- spaces as opposed to perhaps a cute little neighborhood with a park and.
Yeah. That's, I agree with you.
I don't know, maybe it's, they just don't have that vision or uh but the revenue is something that can't be ignored. So I mean.
And I don't know how much in property taxes that will make up the revenue from the lot, the lost revenue.
Single family home for a teacher. And we were to put it, maybe a couple of them, maybe one in the RV park. How are you going to keep that affordable? Because I I personally tried to buy in this town. And I'm really looking at nine hundred million dollars, something like that.
Were you here for that conversation?
Were you here when Chad talked about that?
I was, but I'm saying, but how did, well, yes, I was, but I'm still, I I always think the market is going to take it over unless you go ahead and you say we're going to control the market.
That's exactly.
That's what he's saying.
That's what you do. The land is owned by the city.
Or a land trust.
Trust, one or the other.
Okay, all right, all right.
So the 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 land continues to be owned and you've only got the house that, so that controls that right there. You certainly don't have the equity in the land. You've got whatever equity is in the house. It's gonna make some housing.
It limits your equity, but you still have some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like anything else with affordable housing, it's a trade off. They allow somebody the opportunity. I'm not fully on board with necessarily all of that. I have views of maybe a lot more density for near the RV park and maybe instead of lying along, but I see that as an opportunity for the city and I certainly welcome the discussion having about it now.
Well, we don't have too many other pieces of land to even consider.
We don't. And you know, it's interesting to me. I I was looking for pictures, but of course I can't find them now that I want them. I I printed up a whole bunch of pictures of really cute uh middle income housing. It does not have to be. It doesn't have to look like a a box with aluminum windows. It can be really charming. It can have a front porch. I I I suggest I'd ask if you have any time to go down to Manzanita in the next couple of months and look at the housing project in Manzanita. That it it's absolute, I've been there probably five times just because I enjoy driving through it. It's so cute. They're little houses.
Are they tiny houses?
They're, no, they're nine hundred square feet, maybe to tw- to fifteen hundred. In anywhere in that range and they have front porches that you can sit on, you know, covered front porches. And they have um their they have yards and gardens and they're and they have a common area in the middle, which is uh, you know, can can be planted as a community garden or whatever you want. Or just kept as grass and they're.
Long term rentals.
Oh, yeah, no, they're owner, they're owners.
None of those were made as affordable house.
No, but they they're pro- they weren't built as, they weren't built as affordable housing, no, but they were, they're middle income housing.
That's a stretch.
Well, I don't know. I talked to a couple of people who live there.
Yeah.
And they're not um.
Sold at market rate.
So when when we talk about middle housing.
Right, but they're so small.
Talk about middle housing versus affordable housing, how much are we talking about in terms of cost?
A lot.
Well, okay, middle housing.
Find a lot.
Chuck was talking about middle housing and building those houses and what price did he say?
He was talking, he was more talking about.
He said four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
He's talking about income rates, sixty-five thousand dollars.
For one to four people, it's six sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. One to four people was the first range and then, you know, the first group. And that, and so it didn't matter if you had four people or one person in the household, if you were making that amount. Because they do it in fours, which I think is a little odd, but anyway, that's how they do it. And so I don't know. I mean, a house in in Manzanita back away from, you know, it's not on the beach. It's not next to the beach or even near the beach. But it's up on a little hillside and and it's um.
And how much do those houses cost?
I don't know what they are now, but I know back when they were, when they were for sale, they were what were considered middle income according to the people I talked to who lived there. And some of them.
How long have they been there?
About three or four years.
No, it was before COVID because a friend of mine rented one of them, long term rented one of them uh during COVID for about a year.
Love it.
So and.
Remember when they went?
And it was small. I think it was like maybe the one they rented was a nine hundred, a thousand square feet. And then the woman I talked to who bought one, um hers is a little bit bigger. I think it's about uh it was maybe twelve or fourteen hundred square feet. That's about the biggest they get is about fifteen, I think. It's just, it's just interesting to see, just so you can see the concept that it doesn't have to look icky to be.
I think that's the main point.
Yeah.
I thought you were making is you can have more modest sized homes and have them look really nice and.
And and having a neighborhood.
In this case, they were, you know, market rate or.
Right, and that's what I picture in the RV park, to tell you the truth. I picture a little community like that, you know, with all those big trees still there. You wouldn't have to take down the trees at all because lots are already cleared for the for the um campers to go in. So I I just.
I did see that Sea Ranch is on the market for seven million.
Oh, my goodness. I why did I think it was gonna be?
I said, I just didn't.
Yeah, I sat there.
Ask her.
Oh, you know, I thought.
I've asked her. Well, I haven't, she didn't know the price then, but Les sent me a a listing for it and it's listed at seven million.
Oh, I, for some reason, I fantasized.
And the question he asked me was, do you know anything about creating a land trust to try to purchase that property?
And you know, I looked that up and I I looked up Sea Ranch in the in the assessors to see what was there. There's twelve twelve uh park model homes, so there's already homes there. There's the grocery store that could probably be put made into something or maybe.
Rec center.
And the rec center.
Beautiful.
And and I think there's a couple of single family homes because I think she has a home there.
But she's gonna stay there.
Stay in her own home. But I mean, it's already set up, folks.
I know.
Or if we just had a benefactor that wanted to pay seven hundred, seven million dollars, but it's all set up. And has trees and tree and.
Plus that strip along the creek is such natural.
Land, you've got the barn and and the.
Oh, it's so.
Ask her where the. Ask her where the horses are and everything. So.
She can give up the horses.
Oh, she, yeah, she already has. Yeah, yeah. Um, so. I mean, it's, it's there. There, there's our affordable housing right there.
Right.
Right there.
You know, and, and I think she would listen to, uh, plans if it kind of.
Yeah.
Preserves her home and trees and, uh, you know, cause she wants to live there. So.
I mean, it has everything. It has all the utility. It has everything that we, that, that we would want for an affordable housing uh, area and it's gorgeous.
So now we have to find a benefactor.
Now we have to find a benefactor.
7 million bucks. We have a bake sale.
Yeah.
That's the listing price.
That's the listing.
Oh, 7 million dollars. I know somebody who's selling their house for 7 million dollars. That's just one house.
Really?
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we cannot use TLP money.
Yeah.
That'd be great, but we can't.
So if anybody's listening to us YouTube or.
Could a land trust buy it?
Sure.
But sure.
Well, let's get Chet in here and.
I think he's already taken a look.
Oh yes, okay. I think he thinks it's too much money. 7 million dollars for him.
But I added up all the value, uh, the assessors and the assessors, of course, it's an assessment. And of course, you know, assessments are always a lot less than what the real market value is. And it was 5 million, it was over 5 million dollars.
But if the city could somehow acquire it or, uh.
But we.
With a land trust, then Chet would be interested in something.
Yeah, then his nonprofit would be interested in moving in and creating them. Well, I think it's worth a discussion. Oh, I do too. Yes. I know, I walked through that with Gary once and that, that, I mean, I was just like, oh my goodness, it'd be more perfect.
Just a piece of property.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it's so beautiful.
And how many acres is it?
It's about, I think, I wanna say five acres, maybe a little more than that.
Be nice to bring that strip along the creek into city ownership.
Uh, that sure would.
Some, it's practically park.
Yeah.
Park.
Continuation of the trail.
Yeah.
Well, let's make some friends, guys. Let's go out and make some friends. Make friends to make money.
To make friends that have money.
Yeah.
So Les was asking me about land trusts. So if anybody has any, uh, ideas for them.
Well, you know.
Or how you'd raise money for something like that.
When, um.
Have money, ideas about that as national, I mean, um, uh, the North Coast Land Conservancy. They have raised money for land trusts several times.
Well, and.
Yeah.
To be able to preserve the estuary. So that's, it may be.
Yeah.
When, uh, Rich was here, uh, as city manager, he had an idea and it, it went sort of far and then it, for some reason died out, but he had contracted with, um, a land wasn't, it's kind of like a land trust in St. Helens. And they were gonna develop affordable housing, uh, you know, but Elk Creek Road where that condominium is, you was, was going to be affordable housing. Well, down below, which is I guess city land, um, is kind of a wetland area. But anyway, he wants, they wanted to build housing down there, affordable housing down in that area. And they were going to buy the land and then to build it as affordable housing. There was a lot of concern about it and a lot of criticism, of course, about it. Um, but they, they do exist. I mean, there might be one in, you know, maybe the one in St. Helens would be interested in. And they were going to also build some apartments or houses affordable, uh, in Seaside or Warrington area at one time. I don't know that they ever went through that product, through that product.
There is a, there probably is a property right behind that condominium, uh, Elk Creek Road. That's what it is, right?
Yeah, yeah. And that's, but it's, it's.
But I don't know how it's, okay, it's.
Got quite a.
Talking about, I mean, you gotta be careful about, are you talking about affordable housing? Are you talking about middle income?
Well, this was a, I think this was considered affordable housing.
Housing wasn't subsidized. It's a whole.
Oh, it wasn't subsidized. It wasn't gonna be, I don't think it was gonna be subsidized.
But the idea is that the city owns it and then could make it available to someone like an organization like Chet's that gets the funding to build.
Why?
But again, we're talking about trees and slopes and.
Yeah, that's it. It was gonna be a very difficult piece to develop.
That camp.
But I still think we can get this somebody there. Everything's. 10 dollars. 7 million dollars isn't that much anymore.
You know, I, if you like, I'm, you want me to, I will call, um, Katie.
Yeah.
At North Coast Land Conservancy and just talk to her about the land. I'll see what she says.
See what Betsy says.
Might say it's really, really.
Who? Betsy's on the board.
That's here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ron Moppen's on the board.
But I, I worked Katie once, so I'm gonna know her, so I can ask her and see what she says. Maybe she'll say it's impossible. Maybe she'll say, well.
Or she might have some ideas of who to contact.
We'll talk to.
Cause I don't think they would be interested in doing anything because.
No, that's, housing isn't.
Housing.
If there was gonna, you're gonna leave it pristine and take out all the houses, that would be their interest. Yeah. Yeah, they're not, it's not what they do.
But it's a good strip of estuary.
That part of it, they might be interested.
Wetlands.
Yeah, that's really, be really nice to have that protected. So, yeah, well, it's gonna be a. I don't think, it's certainly not gonna be an easy discussion about the idea of increasing density in the city proper. Just because, you know, uh, uh, the idea of, you know, wetlands and trees and natural resource protection is really at odds with increasing density on those family lots. There's just no way around it.
That's the point. It's the Sea Ranch, even more.
Right, right. Cause that avoids that argument.
And, and it kind of answers all.
It has every answer we would want. It does.
Well, I'm sure not the, not the volume. We're never gonna solve the problem here, but we certainly need to take some steps.
To do something.
We do. And here's another idea. I mean, I just thought, I mean, I'm, this is just things that I'm not promoting this or anything, but I have always thought the idea of increasing setbacks on the oceanfront, side yard setbacks is such a great idea. Because when you walk down the street, oceanfront streets and walk around the town, you can barely see the ocean between some of these huge houses. And right now there's only a maximum of 10 feet. And that's not including eaves and, you know, uh, things that hang over, which also sort of, you know.
And then there's trees and stuff that get in the way.
No, no, I wish I never mind. But, um, I'm just wondering if there's, I'm wondering if there is, you know, that, some, some jurisdictions increase was, increase like, okay, I hate to bring up Carmel again, but Carmel has a zone. They have a line.
Down by the sea.
Yeah, they have a line on their map and any house that's seaward of that line can only be, uh, 18 feet tall. So they have a restriction on height.
Oh.
Yes, as opposed to, yeah, one story.
Was to 28 feet here or 24 feet here?
Right, one-story house. The same thing is true in Arch Cape. On the sea, on the sea, uh, seafront in Arch Cape, there's an eight, there's a one-story limit. A lot of the houses are grandfathered in at two stories. A whole bunch of them are. And I, you know, I know just where they are, but there's anything you build from when that ordinance was passed forward. Um, new construction is one story on the seafront. I just.
So that's a county ordinance because.
Well, no, it's, it's an overlay zone or the Arch Cape area.
Okay.
It's not a county, not, definitely not countywide. No, but they have an overlay in Arch Cape.
It was.
It's eroded.
In County, it's part of the county. Yeah.
Right, yeah, right. It's an overlay zone. And I just always thought, wow, that, that's such a great idea to have. You know, so it, it sort of makes the oceanfront and the seafront more for everybody rather than just, you know, um, for the people who live on it. But that, that's just an idea I'm throwing out there. I mean, it's not, you know, but I think that's all part of the, that will come up. At least I know I'll bring it up in the, when we talk about, um, the code audit and zoning. And I, and I think it's a great, uh, uh, it's definitely something to look at.
Well, let's do something about Ocean Avenue. That's a that's a great place to walk where you get expansive ocean for several blocks.
Yeah.
Yep.
Having a path there would be very nice.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's just so many things to, to consider in, in the, I mean, I don't, I, I, it's gonna be a huge discussion when it comes to.
But it's good. We can sit here and.
But these are all throwing out ideas and things to think about so that when, when we do have the discussion, it's not all of a sudden, where did that come from out of left field? It's, there, these are things that I've been thinking about and, and pulling articles. It's so much fun to go online and do research on, on what other jurisdictions have done to address some of these problems. It's fascinating. And some of them don't, you know, a lot of times I get like a lot of real estate stuff where they're, it's now to get around the environmental laws. You know, that's what a lot of environmental.
Pull up some housing.
Huh?
Pull up some housing ones too.
I have, yeah. There's, there's lots and lots of communities that have done, um, middle income housing groupings that, like I said, are just, if you just, just go down and look at the Manzanita one, it's so much fun to drive through it.
I hope moving forward, we can, if you wanna take it, the village character discussion and separate it from the housing discussion, they're obviously gonna collide somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, but I just hope we don't lose the village part of village character. Uh, cause I mean, this, it's also about people.
It is.
Okay, so you're gonna talk to Katie.
Oh, I will, yeah.
On Conservancy.
Um, I don't know if she's with vacation.
Yeah, I would say she's vacation. Yeah, I would wait to answer.
And, yeah, moving forward, I don't know if we can separate those conversations and have them and have them more in-depth. Uh, like we've had discussion about short-term rentals and taking that to the next step and at least deciding what steps we can take.
And there's gonna be a lot of blowback from second homeowners about the short-term rental issue and there'll be a lot of support from, um, people who live here full-time.
So when.
I'm convinced there's nothing we can do that isn't gonna have a lot of blowback. So.
So now.
I commend you all that you're willing to have these conversations.
Yeah.
So Nancy's gonna ask about scheduling.
Huh?
So you wanna schedule some of these.
Well, I mean, we were having all these discussions and throwing out all these ideas, but are we ever gonna come to a conclusion? So I guess the question is, is when are we having a discussion where we actually come to a conclusion and ask either city staff to look at it or we make decisions or, you know, what is the next step? Especially like, let's put, let's say, short-term housing because we, we came down, came up to with a lot of different ideas that we wanted to consider, but then we dropped the discussion, went on to housing. So what do we do with this?
Well, I, do you think that one of the, at one of the future meetings in the next couple of months that we discuss, we put on the agenda, capping short-term rentals?
And the other. I think all of the short-term rental thing, I mean, you got all the list of short-term rental things.
There's.
And I do, I have, I have a list.
Yeah. There's four items, right?
Uh, there's penalties, raising fees, inactivity clause, not allowing an ADU primary residence to be used as a rental.
Yeah, she's got it.
Yeah.
As far as the code audit, what zone we wanna allow short-term rentals in?
So why don't we put that on one of our agendas and then, and publicize it and see what.
And we'll get feedback and that will inform us and.
Hmm.
One thing I think I would like to definitely have to, um, further to this, the discussion is to have the code audit portion of it figured out.
That would be nice to be somewhere along the line on that.
I mean, it, I can see a way to do the short-term rental without worrying about zoning and things like that. We could just use it as it is, cap it and keep it fairly simple. But if we wanna talk about, you know, making any sorts of changes to the zoning, I'd, I'd rather have that done with wider discussion of the code.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Related to housing?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have the expert here and I bet we're gonna hear a lot of the things we've talked about.
Yeah.
I don't know. At least I hope she knows that.
Right.
We don't have a lot of options of city-owned property, but.
But I think for the, for the short-term rental cap, we can move ahead with that without waiting for the code audit, just not do the zoning portion.
We can talk about the short-term cap, the waiting list, the penalties being tighter, um, the occupancy situation, um, all of that. I think the, the zones, the.
I don't think that's tied to the.
Density within the zones and the ADU, that's all code audit.
Yeah, cause the code audit is gonna, I don't know, the way things are going now, frankly, it, it's.
Not gonna be in my lifetime.
And the only code auditing is.
I sincerely hope it is.
Is the STR loophole, isn't it?
It is, huh?
The ADU STR loophole is the only real code audit issue?
No, um, where they, where they are in zones or whether or not we wanna limit the density.
Yeah, that, that would come into the code audit.
That's a code audit.
So that's a separate topic.
On a work session coming soon.
Hey, did you prefer January or February? What do we tell you? What we have in January somewhere?
Let's go February.
February, okay.
I know what we have in January.
Yeah, we've already kicked everything into.
Okay.
I can, oh.
December.
But we have next today this year. Next year's a leap year.
Oh.
Let's set a meeting for that day.
No.
So is the I got cap penalties, raising fees and activity clause. Is the ADU as a primary residence not allowed to be a rental? Is that, would be that, would that be zoning code audit or this discussion?
No, I think it's.
It would be this discussion. Well, it's both, but having it ready for a code audit so that that's on the radar to solve that one is the idea.
I'm not gonna put on the zones that allow short-term.
Yeah.
That would work out. Okay, I've got that set through February 13th.
February 13th.
Which is a regular.
Oh, it's a regular.
Regular percentage.
So so far your agenda items on the 13th is that discussion and the SDC inflation review.
Okay, I think we can have that. Okay, good discussion.
Okay, and can I, just wanted to bring up the thing that Jan brought up in, in the, before the, is, are we gonna have go to the order or?
Yeah.
Oh, of course.
We always have to have put in the order just for you. Okay, no, I'm joking. Okay, so we're into the miscellaneous section of the.
If we were gonna talk about the RV park?
That's the RV.
Okay.
Yeah. Under miscellaneous.
Talk about that.
That's the RV park.
What about it?
The budget and revenue. And I, I don't think we need to talk about it that much, but the contract, I just had a question about the contract on it. It's.
Can't believe it's, what, that many amendments?
Yeah, I think this was the fifth, fifth, fourth or fifth amendment when it went up to 6% of the total revenue. And the RV park has, as I understand it, from looking at the budget, it looks like RV bar, park has a revenue of 2.7 million dollars gross revenue.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it is.
And then the contract says that the manager who is, um,
Escape.
Yeah, Escape Logic gets 6% of, of the gross revenue.
Yeah.
And plus 4,800 dollars a month. And so that brings it up to about 213,000 dollars a year. Is that right? Is that basically what it is? Okay, just wanted to double check.
Yeah, total revenues in 2023, 2,724,000 total expenditures, which I'm assuming is the contract and percentages is, that alone is 2,180.
It's 6% of that?
And a total of 2,540,000. Uh, and then it jumps right to a ending fund balance.
The question I have is that it's 213,000 that they get altogether.
Forced down.
It's that, that's before their, before the expenses that they pay for repairs, renovations, um, utilities.
We also pay for a lot of repairs and renovations.
Yeah, so basically we're getting 2.7 million dollars in revenue and clearing 300,000 plus 59,000, about 359,000, right? That's what we're clearing every year, netting every. That's what we're clearing every year, netting every year. Cause three hundred thousand goes into general fund and fifty nine thousand goes into reserve, reserve.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
But then it also has an ending fund balance.
Yeah, we have a rent and ending fund balance, what, three million?
Huge amount of money they're getting, I think.
And then there's also the TLT income from it.
Now we get the TLT on top of that.
But that doesn't go directly into the RV park clinicals and the TLT fund. Okay, so we don't see that on there.
Yeah.
So they're getting that money for collecting fees, keeping the books.
And being responsible for the repairs and maintenance.
But they're rating.
The repairs get, we pay, we pay extra for, we, they don't.
Yeah, they, they submit the bills every month and.
Yeah, so we're.
I don't see a lot here in the budget for that, honestly.
I think they're planning on coming with a big ask this year.
Huh? A big ask for more maintenance.
Yeah. Projects.
Projects.
Uh, it's hard for me to get my ha- handle on that whole thing. Um, it just sounds like a lot of money going to expenses for it. Without a lot of money. Hmm, that the city is netting. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out.
I just came up with.
Trying to.
Five hundred and forty four thousand that were netting and.
They said.
Three hundred thousand is going to the general fund. Sixty thousand is going to the RV park reserve fund. Uh. So.
So, and so in TLT taxes, what do we get from it?
And that's a total separate budget, so I. I don't have that in front of me.
Well, it'd be interesting, I think, to have a drill down on what goes into materials and services, so we would.
That's gotta be the contract and operations.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I see a detail on that, wouldn't it? Although, if your number was right and it was two million, one fifteen.
It's two point seven million altogether. It's two hundred and thirteen thousand, uh, that, that's the.
That's the income.
That's no, that's the six percent of the two point seven million. And forty eight hundred dollars a month on top of that. So together, that's two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Yeah, that we. That we pay for their, for the ma- for their operations. You know, for the manage, to, to, to manage the thing, that plus we pay the expenses that, the actual expenses of, of operating it.
Bruce, are you writing down detail on materials and services?
Are you sure that's, that's, that number seems low to me, Nancy. Six percent of two point seven four oh million?
Is about, is a two hundred, no, a hundred and sixty three thousand. And then forty eight hundred dollars a month on top of that brings it to two hundred and thirteen thousand.
But the other point of this is this contract is coming up for renewal in June, so it's time to. Be discussing that and we're sitting here talking about all kinds of great plans for it and. What do we wanna do about that?
My figures? Yeah, I think so.
Like two hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think that's low.
Seven.
We can do a shorter term renewal. It was, we can do a shorter term.
Six percent of two million, seven hundred forty. What is that?
Was my initial thought.
One hundred and sixty three.
One hundred.
Thousand four sixty.
Right.
Would you get one hundred and sixty three thousand? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred and sixty three thousand plus the eight hundred brings it up to two hundred and thirteen thousand a year.
Because I get four.
I get forty eight hundred dollars on top of the hundred and sixty.
You mean forty thousand.
Forty eight hundred dollars a month.
Times twelve.
Many conversations. Times twelve.
Okay, go ahead, Gary.
Do we want Bruce to? Come back with a recommendation on a shorter term renewal? So that we have some flexibility. Over the next.
Two and twenty.
Year or two plus on this rather than tying it up for another four years under the.
Well, definitely, but if they're gonna come back with a much big, a much bigger ask, I have real reservations.
And I didn't, anybody look at the? Uh.
Uh, it depends what is national. I don't think you don't, you don't know that yet.
That's a standard ninety.
Well, and when you made that comment, Bruce, did you mean they're coming back with infrastructure asks, not their money asks?
Projects.
Projects, okay. Finance, yes.
Probably wanna update pool building. I would think. We did that.
They did that a few years ago. They could, they had a big, big building project there, what, three, four years ago?
Yeah, it wasn't the exterior, I think, but it was windows and.
Yeah.
Um, also like the uh, air conditioning.
Coverage.
And the roofs, things.
Are any spaces for portables there for temporary offices?
I won't talk about that too.
Yeah, potentially.
They have a manager's apartment.
Yeah.
The owner.
But I think we need to wrap our heads around, you guys are sitting here doing math. I think we need to wrap our heads more around. There's both profits from the operations and there's TLT, so we kinda need that combination. And if my numbers are correct, it's five hundred and forty four thousand in profits.
Uh, it's not profits, it's what, it's. Three hundred thousand and fifty nine thousand, but then what do we get in TLT taxes from them?
That's something we need to know.
Yeah, well, those are just the amounts that went to reserve, though.
No, three hundred thousand went to the general fund.
Yes.
And fifty nine thousand went to the reserve.
Yes.
That's three hundred and fifty nine thousand.
But then there would be profits on top of that. I don't think we split.
That's not.
No, no.
No, it's the net. That's the net and, and, and the net, and then uh, in addition, and then we pay them two hundred and thirty thousand to get three hundred and fifty nine thousand.
Right.
Basically is what, what's happening.
I don't know, I just did total revenue minus. Materials and services.
No, it just.
And that gave me five hundred and forty four thousand.
There's a transfer out to general fund, three hundred thousand.
I know.
And then that's what you'd look at. That's what you look.
But if you do the math. Uh, two million, seven, twenty four, four seventy four. Minus the materials and services, twenty one.
But why are you managing the?
Oh, seven, oh, five hundred and forty four thousand, four oh four. And of that, you subtract, we're taking three hundred and moving it to the general fund and sixty thousand moving it to the RV.
And where's the other two hundred thousand coming from, going to?
Yeah, that's I, that's my question.
Well, that's, that's not the question. Question should be, how much is going to general fund, three hundred thousand? How much is going to the reserve, fifty nine thousand? That's what we're looking at.
I'm just talking about the total. Of profits here.
No, they're not profits.
They're not profits.
Well, where are they going?
Three hundred thousand dollars.
There's, there's no, there's no bottom line on this.
Without, without can do, sorry.
It jumps right from, here's the total revenues, here's the total expenses to an ending fund balance. But if you subtract the total. Expenditures from the total revenues. Not counting the two transfers, it's five hundred and forty four thousand, four hundred and four.
I can send you a report with the answers to your questions.
That would be nice. I mean, I think we need to understand the.
Right.
Okay, I think that's it.
Yeah, the, my question is, where are the other hundred and eighty four thousand?
If you take the difference between the two ending fund balances. Gonna come up with. So take the difference between the two ending fund balances and you'll get the diff.
From the two different years?
Yeah.
Okay, so add the, add the one eighty four.
Yeah.
To the eighty nine, so essentially it's going into the ending fund balance.
As for the revenue for the TLT, TLT revenues exempt record, so we can provide it to you because you're members of the council, but there are some strict confidentiality. Rules with TLT revenue.
Because they're associated with business names?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
It's so, we can email you the information, but, cause we're gonna do the same thing. It's that, uh, we're talking about the center.
So it is five forty four.
I didn't get those.
Some of it just staying.
I sent it to the.
Budget.
The finance departments, yeah.
Uh, why, I didn't see them. I'll have to look.
Oh, report it.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to let you know, so that.
What, what is that? Why is that? Why can't we know? Like, why can't we know specifically how many?
It has to do with the amount of money that they make. It's confidentiality.
It has to do with the amount of money they bring in in short term rentals.
But then you can extrapolate how much they are paying taxes, you can extrapolate that.
By the TLT budget.
Yeah, I guess what I call it always, how many.
I'm not, I'm not gonna deal with it right now.
And how many rooms are exempt? For their uh, their religious organization and how many are that they're actually renting, they're short term, paying short term rental tax on.
Right, and we don't have that information because it's not tracked to that detail.
Wow.
So and that's in that email.
I know, I, I just didn't, I, I find that so odd. Would not be able to know that.
I think it's the way the code is written, but I, then we, I mean, that would be a lot of level of detail that each person would have to provide.
Yeah.
On their return.
It just that.
I think that's a tax thing, isn't it? I mean, in terms of federal, federal tax laws.
But, but what's interesting to me is they are the biggest user of water. You know, the biggest user, the biggest water user in the city as an entity and they rent out. They, they own an incredible amount of land in the city and yet we don't know. How many of those rooms are, you know, short term rentals and how many of them they're used, getting their exemption for? And if that exemption is in fact. On the up and up, we just don't know, is, is, I'm not accusing them of anything, I'm just saying that. There's a whole bunch of information we don't know and it seems like. It's always been that way and so everyone just sort of accepts it. Is that, is that true? As far as I know, and I don't know how much of it is state law or federal law.
So another example is Martin Hospitality is the same way. All of their properties are in one account. So I can't tell you which one of them had how many rooms sold. So anybody who owns more than one, they're, they have one account for tax revenue.
So how, how do you audit it then? As a city, you can't audit them because you don't know, you don't have that information.
Question, I mean, they would have to, they would have to first of all feel that they're not being honest. And I don't know, I think, um, I don't know this for sure, but I think at one time I heard our auditors pull a couple of returns and review them during the annual audit. So I think that they do a pop search.
Okay.
Every year, on which they legally can do.
Oh, I'd like to ask, cause I'm, I'm just curious about, you know. I, I guess. This is the auditor is coming, I think, January.
Second.
Yeah, January second. Well, my, my interest is fueled because of the issue. Understood.
That's what is.
That's what.
That would be motivated it. But that would be a good question to add.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so back to the RV. We're gonna get. More details on, we're gonna get their TLT.
Exempt revenue with the confidentiality attached.
Right, thank you, and we're gonna get a breakdown on what goes into materials and services.
Yeah.
And a clarification as to how much revenue we get, how much revenue we clear. The city clears each year on that. On the RV park. And I know it's added to the. Ending fund balance, but I wanna know how much it clears.
And do you want that to include the TLT?
I think the TLT should be separate.
Okay.
I wanna know what the revenue, actual revenue is.
So you're talking about the overall revenue of the revenue.
The revenue that goes into our general fund and into our reserve fund.
I think I just got the math on that, but. And it was that five hundred and forty four thousand, but three hundred going to the general fund. And sixty thousand staying, going into the RV park reserve and hundred and eighty four thousand staying in the RV park fund.
Hmm, and contributing to the ending fund balance.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's chunk of money.
Yeah. And if we sold it, well, we wouldn't, you know, how much we're gonna lose. But at the same time, it's a hell of a lot of money to be putting out and not a, you know, comparison, comparatively speaking, it's not that much money coming in. So, I mean. Where do we go with that? I mean, you're talking.
Well, I think that's a, a very good point, Nancy. It's something that we just need to consider moving forward about possibilities.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I think you're right, yeah. It's just, again, that balance, it's just, I mean, it's like almost two million dollars going out. And we're getting. You know, three to five hundred thousand dollars back depending on, look at.
I don't look at it as going out.
We're getting about twenty percent. Of the revenues for not doing anything or.
That's another way to look at it too.
What percent?
Getting about twenty percent of the RV park revenues. About four hundred and. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we don't have to run it.
But we do pay for everything that goes into it.
Hmm.
Right.
Assuming that's coming out of the materials and services.
Yeah.
And that's excluding the room tax as well.
And then we have to add room tax to that to see our total. Um, benefit from it.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And then the question, the big question is, how much of that RV park is that, are we going to be devoting to? Affordable housing, if that's where we wanna go with it? And how much revenue do we lose on that? And then, you know, the trade off is property taxes on those houses, but those property taxes probably won't come close to.
Right.
What kind of revenue we get off the, the park now.
But again. Right, for middle housing, there's gonna always be a trade off.
Yeah.
And would you rather have it be? Natural resources or money?
Well, and then we also have the three city projects that we're paying for that out of some re- our revenue from the RV park.
Yes, the.
Well.
Out of the RV reserve fund.
That's actually kind of a bad argument to bring up though, because then it does become. And then that shifts the argument to being. Do we do our projects or? Then that, that adds credence to the argument that. It's hurting our ability to do middle housing, to do these projects and we don't want that art. We don't, in other words, we don't wanna be put in that position.
Well, that's where we're putting ourselves in.
You know.
Position, putting ourselves.
That's not. Cause then it does become either or. So. That's very uncomfortable.
Hmm.
But it's not a sizable.
We don't know that yet. We'll have to get those answers.
Right, yeah, but my guess, my uneducated guess is that it's not a sizable.
Depends on what we do with it.
Right.
Yeah.
But what I'm suggesting is just a test project.
Well, and I guess to be totally accurate. Uh. The three hundred thousand dollars that's. Or the money that was going to fund the project was going to City Hall. And Police Station.
That's true.
I mean, from the, from the RV park.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's, it's not school funding.
Right, right.
That's important to remember.
Unless the TLT money is so significant, but I don't think it is, especially for pilot project. You know.
No, that's the fund we get. Is to weigh all those things.
Yeah.
That's why they pay us the big bucks and it's all out of the RV fund.
Okay, are we ready for good of the order?
I sure.
I feel like we're a little.
More than ready.
Okay, does anybody have anything for good of the order?
I do. Yes, okay, I, 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 I am very, um. I've always been concerned about. Um. Uh. Impacting citizens' ability to appeal. Impacting citizens' ability to appeal. Issue. It really is, it's whether or not, it's whether or not you have access. To legal action or to use of the law. And and. By making appeal costs high. You are really making it almost impossible for an average citizen. To appeal a project, and the only people who can afford to appeal are contractors or, you know. Wealthy people or, you know. The Roberts, you know, the Newbirds, you know, all those people who 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 can afford to appeal with. Without even thinking twice about it, and so. I'm wondering, did we raise our appeal costs in in recent years? Did we raise them?
We did when we redid the building permit fees. No, we redid the building permit fees when we switched over to Acela. I think it was when we switched to Acela, they reviewed all of the the end use fees as well, because I don't believe those have been updated since two thousand nine. And so our fees were very, very old, and when they went to do the fees, they researched what other cities were charging before they chose their fees.
And what what year was that, do you know?
This is twenty three, I think it was twenty one.
Yeah, it was a few years ago.
Jeff was still here.
Yeah, Jeff is still here.
Yeah.
Could have been twenty, it could have been twenty.
You're not far off now.
Yeah, I think it's somewhere in there.
So we raised the.
We raised everything.
And okay, but the appeal fee, what was it before, prior to?
That sounds about right.
What'd you say?
Four hundred.
Four hundred. And now it's six hundred.
Up to some of them are a thousand.
Wow.
I think it depends on the type of the appeal, because there's a couple of different forms I can look at.
Like, what's a tree appeal, for example?
I think that one's an administrative appeal, so that may be. Oh, no, that goes to planning commission, so.
Five hundred?
Yeah, it.
I think is what I've remembered. And would it be um? Discriminatory if we said if you were a permanent? Full time resident of Cannon Beach, there was a different fee schedule for an appeal?
I'd love that, but.
When then you've got.
Think you'd have a property owner, if you're a property owner but not a full time resident. I think that would, oh, that would be interesting to ask Bill.
Throw one thing, so.
I I'd I'd love to watch Bill's head explode when asked about.
Lisa made me say it.
Give you guys a quick rundown, so the appeal of an administrative decision is six hundred dollars. And then. An appeal. Of a designer view board decision, I clicked the wrong button. Is a thousand.
Wow.
And then a planning permission is also a thousand.
Wow.
And those are the three appeal forms that are right here on the website that I could quickly see.
Because there are.
And I imagine the appeal, the appeal uh cost goes to. Staff time to deal with all of the paperwork and.
Can't cover all of the expenses that we've had with a lot of our appeal.
So if you think about it, though, so a planning commission appeal at a thousand dollars, someone, a a community member feels like. The planning commission made a terrible decision. And they want to appeal it to the council?
Yeah, D R B and planning commission gets appealed to council.
Okay, that that's just not, how 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 many have you ever seen, except from a a a landowner?
Yeah.
Or a contractor, ever? How many do you see from a neighbor?
Uh, we saw one.
One, that Vistastines, right? Yeah, that was it.
Yeah, it is expensive.
Through D R B and planning commission, it's the home.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Making the decisions.
That that it's just.
Is there a restriction on who can appeal?
But it was like that when it was cheap, too.
Yeah.
Is it supposed to be a party of record? No, because not everything has a party of record, so no, I'm not, I'm actually motion on the answer of that.
What if Friends of the Dunes or Friends of the Trees wanted to appeal? I think they could, they'd have standing to appeal because they have. Concern about trees or they have concern about the ocean shore, so. They would have to raise. A thousand dollars to appeal a decision, I just, I really. There's something. Really chilling in in that, you know, as far as. Ability to appeal.
So would you like to have a discussion with Bill on how?
I would.
Bill and Steve, I think Steve needs to be involved.
Yeah.
It'd be great, yeah.
Um, just.
And and I'd love to know what, you know, if there's any jurisdictions that have other kinds of rules that are more. Uh, citizen friendly.
Well, I know when we went through, when. The council is considering all the development. All of those fee schedule things that that Jeff went to other. He had a PowerPoint.
I'm sure.
That showed all of the. So it'd be, it would be interesting to see if any other city has a citizen level. Appeal schedule.
Right.
What would it? If Lisa is the person that was gonna do something. And I, and and she got turned down at D R B. She would pay. Thousand dollars, I guess, to go ahead and if she wanted to appeal that. If I'm a citizen that doesn't like her project. Do I get a better rate? Than the homeowner? You know, the person that's doing the project?
I I think that's completely valid.
Yeah, yeah, that is a valid point. That would be a problem. Just thinking, though, if if it's a. I I'm just thinking about something like, I'm I'm just thinking of um. Like, if somebody wanted to appeal. Uh, the wetlands decision that was made it on forest lawn. Friends of the Trees, let's say, decided they. They 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 can't do it because they can't, they don't have a thousand dollars. That that group, they don't, you know, they're not, they're not into fundraising, they don't have, you know. So what it means is that, but but if if the the uh. Project, the people who want to do the project, like the, you know, developer. Thousand dollars is nothing to him, so there's something, it's just a skew, I mean, there's something that is not, I don't know how you fix it. But I'm curious to find out from Bill if there's any. Way of doing that. Like, if a nonprofit or or a citizens group wants to appeal. Do they have to raise a thousand dollars somehow, or? You know, I don't know. It it just seems like it's. It seems like it's set up that people who have money get to appeal and people who don't, don't. And I think that the legal process should be available equally to everybody.
The quasi judicial process?
Yep.
Jen, quick comments?
Uh, just to say, it does seem like things are skewed more towards development than towards protection. Of our environment, and that is something in our culture. And in our world that I think we need to start changing. And maybe we could think about changing it right here. Because the way things are set up, we're just basically. Every year, we're losing more of our environment. And yes, people are important. But our environment is for people. So our earth is really struggling and. It's up to each one of us to figure out a way to make a change for the better. And I think this is part of it is. How do we go about making it so that we're protecting our? Our environment, we have to really think about it.
So what if the attorneys, now, go ahead, you can sit down. And just, what if our attorney said, well, the only way to make it equitable is there's no fee for appeal?
Or lower them all.
Lower it for everybody, yeah.
For everyone, yeah. But how, but then does that cover staff time?
Yeah.
Well, that's what, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah.
Bill, from uh Steve and and Robert, too.
Because it's not just, does it cover staff time? If it doesn't cover staff time, who pays for the?
Because we're free, we can always sit here for every.
You mean, who pays for it?
Out there.
If if the appeal, um if the cost of the appeal is five thousand dollars, when you're going to put in staff time and everything else. And you say, okay, but if if somebody wants to appeal, they only pay five hundred. Okay? Somebody is going to pay that forty five hundred, and it's everybody else and taxes or whatever. Somebody has to subsidize it.
It's true.
And then on the flip side, you still have an application fee, you can use the same argument with the application fees as you could in appeal.
Yeah.
Application for development, you mean?
Yeah. If you need to go to D R B, you need to go to planning commission, I mean, if you want to do a setback reduction, it's five hundred dollars complication fee.
Right, but that's. That's, it's sort of, that's different to me, because a setback reduction means you want to use your land in a way. That is against what the ordinances say, so you want to, you want an exception from what the ordinance is. So you paid, you know, you so you're a developer, building a home in Cannon Beach, and if you need setback reduction. You you want, you know, special circumstances for your particular house. I don't find that as compelling an argument as. Somebody who is very upset about, you know, a group of of concerned citizens who are worried about. A tree being taken down or so, you know what I mean?
That was just the first application that pulled up, for for an example, though, I mean, D R B is definitely a lot less, but a major modification for D R B is six hundred dollars. And if you live in a multifamily house. And you do landscaping changes, you're gonna have to go in front of them. And so that would be a sit a different situation than the setback reduction, but more in line with what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Because that would be a person, not necessarily a developer, you know, it's a homeowner.
Yeah.
It definitely something we can.
Yeah, and then you got a situation like um we had. With um coffee with the counselor. You had somebody that built a house. Paid all the fees that were supposed to be paid. And then you have somebody that's unhappy with the result. Should they be able to? Uh, stop that work? Or do an appeal of what that person is doing at a lower cost than what the person paid to do the work?
So is that what initiated this conversation?
No.
Okay, oh, okay, no, just I'm just wondering.
I'm seeing, but this, it's. I mean, there's, there should be some level of equity to protect the person. That is doing the work, is trying to do it right, but somebody else doesn't like what what the choice is. Like, if I decide it's important, I can't get the house to be what I want, I'm not comfortable with it, my house isn't gonna slide. If, you know, unless I take that tree out and treat for it. It's that that's a choice I'm making on my property. I'm gonna pay, do I pay more money for that? Than somebody that's just as upset about, you know, the fact that we're taking down a tree, and so they only have to pay a hundred dollars to appeal my building permit.
Yeah, that's that's a problem, I mean, I agree, that that makes it. You know, but I mean, the example that you used. About the woman not just not being happy, I I don't think that was even what the situation was. When we had coffee with the counselors, I think that the problem was is that they. The homeowner had built their wall higher than the code allowed. And so.
But understood, and there we, we put, you know, time in on that project, and there was some questions to whether or not it was too. Because it's it's navigating. And so, uh but I'm just saying, with that. I I think that that the people. That are. Property owners. That are looking to build homes here. Uh, should, we should also consider some level of protection. For whatever it is that they're trying to do, as opposed to somebody that's trying to stop them from doing it.
Yeah, I I I I agree with you, Bruce, but I I think that usually the people who are trying to stop. People from doing things are are not just doing it because they don't like it, they're doing it because they're concerned about a bigger issue like. You know, protection of the environment or natural resources or something like that, so it's not just like, oh, I don't like it. You know, I I don't like, it it's it's a bigger thing than that, it's.
It's but if you're taking down a tree. And it's trees on my property. And then if somebody wants to, you know, I'm paying all of these, paying everything I do. I have, you know, an arborist or whatever come look at it, if the contractor says that tree is not gonna survive, somebody else doesn't like that decision. Should my, should I be paying, and matter of fact, I may be subsidizing the person that's coming and uh. And arguing against. I just think that I understand. About having people make it be relatively easy if something, somebody has been wronged or, you know, something is being done improperly. But I also think that people that are 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 residents. And citizens should have some level of protection. That some that can't be done, you know, easily and arbitrarily. Like, if I can go ahead and do that for ten bucks. And I don't want the person to build a house next to me. Then they're doing all the stuff that they're doing right. And then I come along and I can go ahead and hold them up. And I can do it for a very small.
Put this on an agenda at some point, I mean, I.
Yeah, that's the direction I was trying to go.
Go on and on about this all day.
Yeah, that's an interesting discussion, and I don't, I don't, you know, it's not, I don't know if it's solvable or not, because. I, because it involves. Subjective. Um, decisions about what is worthwhile appeal and what isn't a worthwhile appeal, all those kinds of things, you know, coming.
I wouldn't mind talking about this sometime, but not today.
So is this something we can maybe put on a work session, not necessarily this topic, but just a review of fees in general? Because if you're gonna be looking at modifying one fee, we might want to just do an update of our fees since two thousand twenty one or twenty. And then that could be a natural segue into this.
But I think um. To have this kind of a discussion, I think we need. Some legal advice.
Before we get to that, but.
Yeah.
Uh, we can get legal advice from Bill or Ashley, but then it is probably a good idea for us to review our fees.
Oh, sure.
In general, and we can put that as an upcoming.
Yeah.
Maybe March or something, because in the test that can get situated, and that would be a great project for her to get familiar with the other, her counterparts in other cities.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Branded.
Well. I think the discussion we just had is a perfect example. We're going to be back right where we are right now on this discussion. And what I've heard and and. It's just my opinion is that. It leads me to believe that the fee structure the way it is, while. While it seemingly makes it difficult for citizens to appeal, it's fair overall.
And that's why I think we need a legal.
I agree.
Opinion before we even, because I mean, if they say absolutely not, you can't have. You know, that's not. Equitable, it's definitely not clear and objective.
Yes.
And so. Then why, I mean, I still think we should review the fee schedule. Yeah, real quick.
Real quick, I just to add to this scenario, which I tried to bring in up in the letter in the beginning of this meeting. Is what came up lately was with the Monica Court, which is a subdivision in the North End. And so we not only had, you couldn't. You had to pay six hundred dollars to appeal one of those lots of the of the five that are being developed. You would have had to pay three thousand dollars, so. Five times the six, so would there be a possibility if you wanted to? Appeal a subdivision situation? Could there be one? Fee that wouldn't be exponential like it happened this time? One question.
Have you asked? Did you talk to Steve?
I did not talk to Steve, no.
But that item was appealable when the subdivision was approved through planning.
Now, we passed, we passed that if he didn't need.
Yeah, that that subdivision was done.
When I got on the. How long can you do a thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, yes. The deadline was yesterday for the excavation. That was what was the. The object that was going through at yesterday, that was the deadline for the appeal.
And you're talking about the building permit, you would have what you wanted to.
It was before the building permit.
A development.
Excavation, type two, yeah.
Okay, so it would be a development permit, but you could have appealed the entire subdivision.
So it's, yes.
Are they all listening to us? Back to work. You'll be glad you did.
Alright, so the legal input is a discounted rate for locals and or nonprofits?
Yes.
Yeah.
And and what that. Means.
Yeah.
And how do you define locals?
Right, well, that's another issue, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it sorts itself out a lot in the courts, but because you can have to pay attorney's fees, and actually not at Luba, but in. Higher courts, so people don't bring frivolous appeals because they don't want to. Have to pay attorney's fees if the court, if the judge says, what is?
Turn the turn.
Out of here, you know, but um. Yeah, we don't have, that's not what happens here.
Okay, we got it on the agenda.
I think I got it, on a beautiful work session, lending for these fees and ask for like.
Anything else for good of the order?
Don't forget your leftovers in the fridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you talking, I'm sorry.
No, I just mumbled, mumbled.
Um, with everything else that we've got going on, do we, what is your timeframe? A month, two months, six months to get these things back to you?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
No, I'm joking.
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. So you're talking about. You mean, the RV park information that we.
RV park information, I can probably get to that to you in a month. But like this thing about the appeals and there were other things.
Well, the, the appeals is gonna be on an agenda, so I'm just gonna ask the question.
No, I know, but with all the other things that we have going on on the agenda, we've got a, a bond issue, there's all this other stuff. Do you expect to see it in the, like, January, February timeframe, or are we talking about the June time, timeframe?
Didn't we schedule?
Yeah, those items?
Yeah, they're all in February.
February and March.
Yeah, so everything that we had, it would have been February, March, including the bond issue. Is, is, you know, all, all on those, that, those one or two meetings. So it's just not. You know, I, I, I think that you all have done a great job on, in the retreat, but it's very hard to provide a meaningful. Uh, discussion and, and staffing something with a very short time, when it's such a complicated, there are several complicated subjects.
So let's move them to April and May.
Which things?
The two things we put in February, March.
You mean that, the cap on the short-term rentals?
What?
We don't need, we don't.
The, the RV is, is, that's gonna be a relatively quick item, but what happens after is not. You know, if there's gonna be discussion, if there's gonna be negotiations, if there's gonna be, um, a new RFP to go out for, you know, new. Uh, new service, that's, there, there's just a lot of things with these, I mean, it's easy to.
Well, when do you have to, when do you have, when is the contract renewal?
June.
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 But it has to be before then.
Right.
But having it on a work session.
Has to be well before then.
Well before then, yeah.
But realistically, the best that we would probably be able to do is to. Um, do a short, like maybe a one-year or a two-year extension. And then figure all this stuff out. We're not gonna figure it all out by.
No.
By June.
Not expecting.
If we're trying to get the budget done and without a finance director.
Right, no.
Say that we'll be able to go ahead and do all these.
A one, two, two-year extension with the big ask?
Well, that's a budget committee.
That's a budget. You, you'll get to decide if they do those things.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Or if you want to even entertain those things.
Okay.
Um, having the short-term rental cap.
In February, I don't see why that would be a problem.
I'm asking Bruce if that's a staff issue.
And what would the, what, what work did you require from us on that?
I don't think there's anything.
There's not, it's just.
We just say, we're gonna talk about caps?
Yeah.
And five other things, but.
Oh, yeah, but I don't think they.
One thing I think that I could say personally that would help me to answer your question. Is if we could get an email broken down with what we've asked to discuss.
Sure.
And then offer our priorities.
Sure.
And maybe a sentence or two to synopsize.
Sure, and then put that on a workshop.
You can have that done by five, right?
Yeah. Jen's got that done.
Does not even have to be done by.
No, that's, that, that's a good answer, and we will do that, and we'll probably get it, that's when we can probably get to the January workshop, because it's just, you tell us this, this, this. And it's a list.
But for the short-term rental cap, there's nothing we need from the staff on that.
There's nothing you need to get the item on, but it's always more after, if you decide to do something. Then all of a sudden, that's something new for Steve to go ahead and add into the, uh, you know, work with herb works and, and everything else that's going. So it's never just the first item. It's what happens if you decide to do something with it.
Well, and also, I think some of the things that we were talking about for the short-term rentals. Are questions that we would sure like to have answers to, so he's going to have to probably do a little research beforehand. To, to be able to answer the questions that we've asked.
Right.
So, yeah, there is a little staff, uh, time there, because he is going to have to be able to answer those questions.
Okay.
What questions, I, I mean, we have cap penalties, raising fees in activity clause. And not allowing ADUs as a primary residence. So I thought we were just continuing the discussion of that.
Yeah.
You guys could come up with what kind of, what it is you, how you want to do it, and then we could research if that's possible.
Yeah, I thought we would make some decisions at that meeting and give recommendations.
But don't we want to have him here to talk about what the, what the, um, repercussions might be? If we, like, put a cap on it, or what the repercussions might be in terms, or what kind of work might be, need to be done to strengthen the penalties? Or maybe he has a suggestion does, in terms of what needs to be done, I mean.
Steve here.
That's what we're doing in February.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but we wouldn't need to do any work beforehand.
Though we would want Steve here to be part of the discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the staff, but I think Steve might wanna consider what those questions, you know, what, what the discussion topics are. And, and maybe have some of his, some of his own advice to us, and so he might have to actually think about it. So, yeah, he has a little work to do.
But I, I thought you were referring to research, like you wanted us to provide you information in.
No.
Which is what you were getting.
Research is what'll happen at the second meeting.
The second meeting, yeah.
Ask for, ask for a bunch of research, who has already done this, what other.
Yeah.
What are other?
Yeah, we need to have some of those.
And then when we, when we ask for those requests, I think we need to be mindful of staff time. And not expect it's gonna happen in March. Is that what you're saying?
And, and reasons, like, we saw what happened, we had one meeting that went four hours. And we did it because we had so much stuff on the meeting just before it.
Yeah.
That we said, okay, let's go ahead and move everything to that.
Right.
And we'll be doing the same kind of thing, and, you know, and again, I, I'll stay here all night for meetings, but we're trying not to put you in that position. But when we just go ahead and put things on top of things, and, uh, we've got stuff that we haven't completed yet. So, I'm, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, uh, sound like, you know, Debbie Downer with it, but I just see all the things that we've got coming. And all the things that we've got going, and, you know, again, I wanna make sure we do it all well.
And I think we all want to be very mindful of.
Thank you. Thank you, it's appreciated.
Yeah. And especially until we get a full-trained staff.
Yeah.
So. We're asking a lot of our city staff.
When we have the short-term rental discussion in February, we'll see what we need. We may not need that much information.
Right.
We may need a lot, we'll see.
Right.
At that time.
I thought it was more of us to figure out what, where we have consequences.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, alright.
So do we need to have an email asking for priorities, or do?
Uh, we'll still get, put something out and say this is discussed.
Okay. So.
I, I have nothing else.
Okay, I have one good of the order, and that's to thank everyone for our first smooth year together.
Yeah.
And.
Has it been a year?
Yeah, and happy holidays and best for two thousand and twenty-four.
This is your last meeting for the month of December.
I know, what are we gonna do? Where are we gonna meet on Tuesday, not talk about cities? But thank you, everyone, including staff and audience members.
You folks are doing great. You're an excellent counsel.
Well, not to.
Oh, and the meeting.